Meeting to order, School District of Indian River County, six oh one on August the twenty fourth. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please join me in a Pledge of Allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. So the first order of business tonight is the adoption of the orders of the day. Dr. Moore?
Through the chair, we would like to request to move item, wait for it, eight A, which is the, the name of the item is to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the school board and the Communication Workers Association, CWA, immediately to follow presentations prior to citizen input.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve that?
Wait, there's another item.
I was going to get to the other.
Oh, sorry.
All right, another item. Do you want to move another item?
Yeah, usually we approve them all at once, but that's okay.
All right.
The other item is to add legislative platform additions as an action item.
Okay.
And I believe all board members now have a copy of that addition that was written after the workshop today.
Anything else? Can I have a motion to approve the orders of the day moving?
Sorry.
Yes?
Too quick. What I don't see here is the unitary status sustainability. Was that pulled, Dr. Moore? Where am I missing it?
Hold on, it is, it is here. Is?
Everything's changed.
Nine A.
Nine A. Okay, I'd like to pull nine A for discussion. Or rather for, for action, rather, for action. Sorry.
All right. Anything else, any other changes? Do you have a motion to approve those changes?
I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Berenberg, a second?
Second.
Dr. Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right. Dr. Moore, turn it over.
Thank you, through the chair, our first presentation tonight is a long awaited presentation that the board and myself have been working on diligently for quite some time now. It is the presentation of the FSBA Master Board Training Presentation. And for that, I'll ask April Griffin to, from FSBA, to step to the podium.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to come and to present this certification for you. My name is April Griffin. I am a former school board member in Elachua County, and I am also past president of the Florida School Boards Association. And we know that there's a direct correlation to the way that the school board and the superintendent work together, which is the governance team, correlates directly to student achievement and positive district culture. And as superintendent said, we started this three years ago, and then we had to take a break for COVID. You've completed the training, and I think that this shows your dedication to professional development and your willingness to learn how to work better together as a governance team. So I have a plaque for you, and I'd like for y'all to come down if you don't mind for a picture. So, yeah. Yay.
I put on lipstick for this. I did.
Good looker.
Thank you. So here, let's just, well, thank you for, and then I'll, we're going to. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Maybe congratulations.
Good evening. I'm filling in for Kristen Maddox tonight, and one of the things I love about Indian River School District is we always capture a lot of exciting things with video, and this, starting this school year is no different. We have a first day of school video that started off with a bus send out with Dr. Moore at five thirty in the morning on the first day of school. We, the team, the public information team went around and visited many schools, caught a lot of the excitement and activity, the students returning back to school along with staff. Just wanted to thank our community partners who helped welcome kids back, and the first day of school was a success. So if you would, please turn your attention to one of the monitors.
Great here. Great day.
Thank you.
A chip passing here.
Thank you.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bass, and it was an absolutely outstanding first day of school. A lot of effort, a lot of hard work, partnership went into making such a successful opening of school. So just very, very thankful that we were able to return our students back to brick and mortar one hundred percent and really hit our sweet spot, which is teachers in classrooms filled with kids doing exactly what we know how to do to best, which is provide standards-aligned instruction. The next item is, that concludes presentations. The next item is the signing of the contract with CWA. So I would appreciate it if Maureen, I don't know if Mike would hobble up here or not, if that's appropriate. So you, board may remember, a few months back, we began the negotiation process with CWA, and it was an opportunity, as they came to this podium and spoke into that mic about honoring and acknowledging the work that they've done. And there were comments made about the contributions that they made and their level of flexibility and their ability to respond to crisis as we've navigated through a pandemic. And I can tell the two of you that you drive a hard bargain, but every single cent and then some is absolutely worth it for being the glue that holds the school system together. All of the behind-the-scenes things that no one knows gets done, but magically just get done when the teachers show up, or the level of cleanliness in a school, or transporting students to school, which are true heroes. So I cannot acknowledge at any higher level the quality, the professionalism, the high expectation you have for me and your willingness to push and advocate for those in who you represent. So afford you the opportunity to speak to the board now, prior to signing, and after that, Maureen, we will sit and sign your contract.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Maureen Weisberg. I'm the president of the local CWA thirty-one eighty. This evening, I wish to express my gratitude to Dr. Moore and his team, along with the CWA bargaining team, for their hard work and dedication. On May twenty-fourth, we asked the esteemed school board members to show courage to these amazing workers who have given and still continue to give so much to our schools and community. On August ninth, the CWA held elections for the new contract with a ninety-three percent approval rating. This evening, we asked our school board members to ratify the CWA contract for the twenty-one twenty-four school year. On behalf of the CWA, we wish everyone a happy and healthy school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Mike Murray, Executive Vice President of CWA Local Thirty-One Eighty. I would also like to thank Dr. Moore and the board for their willingness to work with us. It was a hard bargain. It was kind of things that we didn't want to talk about and do, but we all came to a mutual agreement. And thank you for your appreciation towards our dedicated workers. Thank you.
And prior to signing, if we could have a motion and second in approval of this contract, it would be greatly appreciated.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion.
Mrs. Vasario, a second.
Please, Dr. Schiff.
Dr. Schiff, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Do we sign it? Yeah, we, uh.
M-O-O-R-E, more legal?
Need to hand out pens, like the president.
No, we don't.
These will be souvenirs. Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
The next, next order of business is citizen input. This evening, we have twenty-five people wishing to speak, two of which will speak specifically to an action item. I'd like to remind everybody that please try and refrain from clapping or bursts of any kind. That would be very much appreciated. The guidelines, each statement made by a member of the public shall be limited to three minutes duration. Persons will be recognized in the order in which the requests were received. Persons may speak for up to three minutes at the beginning of the business meeting during citizen input, as indicated on the order of business, and for up to three minutes to each action agenda item during the action agenda and each board member discussion item, as indicated on the order of business. Persons may only speak once about any given item. The time period may be extended by the presiding officer, and only the individual submitting a speaker's form is allowed to address the board. Time may not be yielded to other speakers. And a process that Mrs. Berenberg started a few meetings ago seems to work well. I will call the first speaker and announce who's standing by to be the next speaker so we can keep things moving as quickly and as efficiently as possible. So the first speaker this evening, Ezra Havakost.
And the next speaker. Who's on deck?
And the next speaker is Jen Freeland. Do we have Ezra Havakost here?
Hi, my, my name is Ezra Havakost. I'm a third grader at Osceola Magnet School. I want to talk about masks and why I think everyone should wear them. My little sister Nora was exposed to someone with COVID on the first day of her school. She had to quarantine for two weeks, and I had to cancel my birthday party. She had a mask on so she didn't get sick, even though kids in her class that weren't wearing her masks did. Wearing a mask isn't a big deal. It doesn't hurt. It doesn't hurt, and it can keep you, keep you, your family, and other people safe and healthy. I have sensory processing disorder and ADHD. Sometimes I don't like the feel of clothes or other things, like the belt I have to wear every day for dress code. But I wear it because it's the rule. I wear my mask because I care about myself and other people. Please make masks a rule for everyone. I don't want to go back to virtual school. Masks don't have to be forever, but we should wear them now to help take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
And happy birthday, a little late. Next speaker, Jen Freeland, standing by, Ariel Garretts.
Good evening, Dr. Moore and the board. I am Jennifer Freeland, President of Indian River Education Association. There is so much going on right now with the startup of school, masks and the such, but I wanted to stop the chaos for a minute. I want to recognize my Treasure Coast Elementary family and let them know that I am saddened for them and myself. We lost one of our own this past Thursday to COVID, Blair. Most of us called her Blair. She called me Freeland, so I guess it's okay. Blair was a bright, happy soul with a great love for her students. She had a fun spirit. She loved bright colors and flamingos. And although she did not catch COVID on our school campus, it doesn't undo the fact that she was young. Her children are young, and many more young people will not get to benefit from her knowing her. Where she got the virus doesn't change the fact that her children will never feel her hug them again or have her help them through the pivotal moments in life, nor does it change the fact that she can no longer do the things she loved or that we can no longer do them with her. Blair was a friend, a teacher, a sister, a daughter, and a mother. We currently have ninety-seven, and the count is still going. Ninety-seven other teachers, ninety-seven people, out due to this nasty virus. As of today, I know personally of four children, just in the last week, that have lost a parent or close family member to COVID. These are children in our classrooms and on our campuses now. So as we start yet another heated conversation over what is best and who should decide what is best, can we please just stop and remember that it is not just the well-being of your children, but of everyone's children? We are all someone's friend, sister, brother, daughter, son, father, or mother. IRC EA has not and will not be part of political peacocking, bickering, or name-calling. We will do what we're supposed to do. We will do our very best to protect our teachers. IRC EA is behind keeping the students and our teachers as safe as possible so that we can all go home to our families. The best we have right now is to look to those who have dedicated their lives to studying infectious disease and to follow those recommendations. Though Blair is a member now, she will be deeply missed long after this meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Barefoot?
Yes.
Could I request a moment of silence, please, in recognition of Ms. Blair?
Will you join us in a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Next speaker, Ariel Garretts, and on deck is Ryan Blade.
Sorry, I'm really nervous again. Hi. Okay, so I wrote this whole thing, but some, some, you know, just, some of it just, I don't want to talk about. Let me start off. Nobody wants to wear a mask. I mean, like, let's just be honest. They're annoying, they're uncomfortable, and we don't even, we, it's frustrating. Nobody wants to do this. We're doing it for the public. We're doing it for those who can't, who can't wear a mask, can't get vaccinated, for those who have immune problems. Those are, that's why we're doing it. You know, I just want to preface with that. And teachers don't want to enforce it. I mean, that's the hardest, you know, that's hard to enforce a mask, but we have to because it's for the public. And right now, we're in a public health crisis, and I'd rather err on the side of caution and enforce the masks and, like you suggested, for a few weeks to see if it helps. And I think that is very smart. And I did see that you guys decided only K through eighth. The problem is, even though we have students or, you know, that are of age of getting vaccinated, it's hard because right now, parents don't come full with vaccinating, and it just, I believe that masks should be all throughout, you know, all grades. I just jumped around. I'm so sorry. And I know I've sent emails, and I want to thank, and I don't know if you guys are doctors or miss, or just by miss, I want to thank Ms. Jones. I want to thank Ms. Berenberg and Ms. Schiff, I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong, for responding. Thank you for that, because I know not everyone did. And I do want to give some anecdotal evidence of my own about depression and masks. I know that you had asked that. And so I have a child who is clinically depressed. He has been Baker acted. And wearing masks does not make that worse. It doesn't make it any worse than the other day because he knows why he's wearing a mask. He's doing it for those who cannot. I also have two other children in the school system. None of them have problems wearing masks. I have an ADHDer, and he, of course, it's, you know, a little more difficult, but he wears it because he knows why he does it. Now, I do have a child who is immune-compromised. She was born fifteen weeks early. She has a trisomy. So we wear a mask. We protect ourselves for her, for us, because she cannot. She's under one. She has oxygen problems. She can't. Actually, she's one to apologize. So that's why we're protecting her and people like her, people who have the same problems. And da-da-da-da. Okay, so I want to end with this. And do you really want to wait for a kid to die before doing anything about this? Shouldn't we be proactive instead of reactive? Whose child are you willing to sacrifice? I know that one person on the board has a child in the school system. Are you willing to sacrifice their child before doing something about this? There's so much more here than just mortality rates.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next speaker, Ryan Blade. On deck, John Karapi.
My name is Ryan Blade. I'm a resident of the city of Sebastian and a member of We the People Indian River. I'm going to say right off the bat, given that HB 241 has been passed, no more mandatory masks. Now, do you have a choice to wear a mask? Absolutely. If you're going to wear one, I'd wear one, say, with some here are wearing KN-95 mask. I actually happen to know a nurse who's a family friend of mine that had actually talked to me quite a bit about the safety protocols that people have used to treat things like tuberculosis, COVID-19. And if you're going to wear any sort of mask, it definitely needs to be KN-95, but you have to toss it out after. So if you're actually going to wear a mask properly, at least for a case where a mask, it would have to be disposed of each time. I don't think we'd be able to really have enough resource for every person in society to be able to reasonably wear a mask, one that would protect you. Even then, as I mentioned in previous school meeting, are you going to have negative pressure? Have everybody gown up in special protective suits? And mind you, this nurse I spoke to, she's previously treated people with tuberculosis, which, from my understanding, it pretty much follows the same protocol. But if you have somebody in the hospital with COVID-19, it pretty much follows a similar protocol. You know, and there's some psychologists have said, and mind you, it affects everybody differently with psychological issues, that some have had negative effects with wearing masks, others can do perfectly fine with it. It varies on person to person, which is why it needs to be made optional. But yes, that opt-out's got to go. Now, if, however, and some are going to probably disagree with me on this, if that opt-out is there because of tort law, I'd be curious to see what the school's attorney would say about this. I would say contact our state legislators, Representative Aaron Bronson, Senator Mayfield, and Governor DeSantis to get a law passed saying that you cannot sue a school system if they take out a mask mandate. That's my understanding is why an opt-out of the mandatory mask is currently present. As for the vaccination, I wouldn't go mandating this. You know, the FDA actually flagged one of the vaccines for heart inflammation. I know I won't get it because I'm probably highly predisposed for a heart attack. I have a grandfather die of 65 massive heart attack. I, according to blood tests, have a tissue inside my heart, it's a bit higher on average than what it should be, so I don't think I'm going to want to go get in that vaccine. On, my other set of grandparents, I'm, my grandmother, I'm one of only two grandchildren. I'm not going to want to mess up my fertility because I'm one of only two grandchildren. I don't want it to trouble my mom, my grandmother, being grandmother, great-grandmother, respectively. And there's other issues going on, too. And there's also plenty of therapeutics that are out there, hydroxychloroquine, regeneron, ivermectin. And I actually know one person that took ivermectin, not vaccinated, and they recovered. Now granted, yes, I understand that everybody's, by different people, autoimmune issues. Now, whether or not a person gets a vaccine, you have to do your own research, that's up to you. But I think some of our scientific community, I think there's been, you know, really error on their part with getting this information out of everybody. Because really, if the scientific community is working as most efficient, we would not be having this debate as well on that, do you wear a mask? Do you get the vaccine? Which is really a shot from what another person that's worked in medical has told me. So these are some thoughts for everybody to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blade. Mr. Karapi, on deck, Dr. Michelle Guancioni.
Good afternoon. I have listened to the workshop this morning, and a lot of good, a lot of good information there that you guys put out there. One thing I think you didn't put out there, and it's from, directly from the CDC itself, is the new CSD. I don't know whether anybody knows what that stands for, CSD? COVID Stress Disorder? And that's what, that's what we're going to prolong if we keep masking these kids up. The CDC, on their website, what are about suicide and depression for kids? During 2020, the population of mental health-related emergency department visits among adolescents aged 12 to 17 years increased 31% compared with that of 2019 and 2020. In May 2020, during the COVID pandemic, ED visits for suspected suicide attempts began to increase among adolescents aged 12 to 17 years, especially girls, during February 21 through March 20, 2021. Suspected suicide attempts, ED visits, were 50% higher among girls aged 12 to seven years during the same period from 2019 to 2020. Those are pretty high stats for kids that are attempting suicide because they're having to wear a mask and social isolate and have COVID Stress Disorder. Now, how many kids have died of COVID in our community? How many kids have attempted suicide? I think Dr. Mark mentioned that he treated kids for attempted suicide and social isolation more than he ever had before. And I think I brought that up last time I was here. How many kids are going to have to go through that before we decide to decide what, that the masks don't work and they keep kids isolated? They don't do anything for them. Does it protect them from COVID? It's not protecting the Delta variant, which, by the way, doesn't have a test. There is no test. I've called the hospital, I've called many places. There's no test, they just assume you have COVID. They just assume it. If you get, if you got COVID-19, then you have, you have the Delta variant, they just assume it. That's what, that's what kind of medical dashboard you're getting, is just assuming that they have the Delta variant. So again, how many kids are going to be treated for this? CSD, keep it in mind because it's happening. And the longer you prolong this, the longer you're going to have more kids. Future, the future of our country, the future of this planet is the children. And you guys say you're protecting them. You're not protecting them. You're putting them in isolation. They're walking into school with masks while not smiling. I watch it every day. Don't you see it? You see it on the video you show, the first week of school. Masks are optional. Everybody's wearing a mask in the videos. We don't need kids to die from suicide because they're not dying from COVID. So wake up and realize that when you're voting. Because if you're voting for masks, you're voting for COVID Stress Disorder, you're voting for kids attempting suicide in the future and on medication. Remember that when you're voting for masks again. Don't follow the lead of all the other counties. Don't do it. Don't do it.
Thank you, Mr. Karapi. Next speaker is Dr. Michelle Guancioni, and on deck is Samantha Fowler.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Michelle Guancioni. I'm a mom. I have two children, eight and five. And this is completely unscripted. I came here last minute, so this is just self, I'm all over the place, I apologize. Not to mention, just a little nervous. But anyway, talking about the masks. You know, this past summer, it was okay for the kids to go to camp. Everything was normal. My kid could go to the skate factory and be there with hundreds of kids. It wasn't an issue over there, there was no COVID. They can go to birthday parties, they can go to play dates, they can go to the country clubs, they can go on vacation, which we went, we can go to the water parks. 90% of the people are not masked. We had a normal, normal summer. And my daughter also does competitive cheerleading. Now, that is a 12-month sport. And when, last March, when the schools shut down, her cheer gym did not. That went through the 80 kids in the gym. And, you know, it's not like cheer where they're sideline cheer. They're like stunting and close, no social distancing and competitive cheer. And not one child, and to my knowledge, not one parent or coach got COVID this entire time. Not to mention that we went to Orlando, Tampa, Daytona, where else? There's one more I can't think of right off the top of my head, with tens of thousands of people there. 450 teams of kids all around Florida and other states. And we're walking around these convention centers like cattle, walking down the hallway to get to your little area where your kid's going to perform. And I said to my husband, I said, boy, if we don't get COVID here, we're never going to get it. And like I said, I mean, I don't know for other people that were there, but it was never shut down. And you're talking close quarters in these places. We went to hotels, we, I mean, it was normal. Now, all of a sudden, school starts and we have to go backwards? You can't tell me that some of these, these people that are here that want masks didn't go on vacation, didn't go to the water parks, didn't send their kids to camp, because they did. I see it on Facebook. They're all there without masks, and it's normal. Now, all of a sudden, we go in the classroom and a kid's got sniffles, and they're saying that they, you've got to stay home. My daughter told me this today. Sniffles. So the COVID Stress Disorder thing, I think that's true because now, when a kid gets sniffles, they automatically think COVID. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, doctor.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Samantha Fowler, on deck, Nicole Campanelli.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Fowler, and, sorry, I'm really nervous, I'm not very good at public speaking. I have a kindergarten and I have a second grader. And I kept my kindergarten out last year because she was definitely afraid to wear a mask. Not because I wore one, my little one, but because my son came home every day covered in pimples, covered in sweat. You don't, if you're a nurse or anybody else, you change your masks four, five, six times a day. These kids sit with these masks on for eight hours a day. Eight hours a day, and it's not fair. If you want to mask your kid, go ahead, but don't force me to mask my kid that is coming home in pimples and covered. That's not right. I moved there five years ago, almost six years ago, from St. Lucie County. I'm originally from South Africa, and we moved here because the school system here was better. But the last two years, I have opened my eyes and it's not. And it's scary. It is political, and it shouldn't be. These are babies, these are kids. They want to see your face. They want to see your smiles when you walk in. And they're five in second grade. Okay, maybe the high schoolers that understands and is more like all of us completely, but the little ones that's sitting there that needs to see the sounds of their teachers' faces. It's okay for you to walk in a restaurant and take off your mask and sit down and socialize 10, 15, 20 parties, or go to resorts. I've been all over. I've already had COVID. My kids have had COVID, and we survived. You know, and you can go sit in a restaurant, I'm a server, but not one time does any person ask, did you wash your hands before you touched my lemon that goes into my water? Or the drink I ordered, did the server wash her hands before she put that lime in your drink? Not one time. So it's okay for you to plaster something over your face so you can't see somebody's eyes or mouth or their instruction, but you can go sit in a restaurant and order a drink from a server. Do you ask if the cooks have washed their hands? I'm telling you that most of them don't even wear gloves when they touch your food. I've worked for over 20 years as a server. I see it. I see these new kids come in, they don't wash their hands. They touch all of your stuff that you eat, that everybody eats. But you don't ask that question. But you're more concerned about these little ones sitting there, and it's okay. Have it optional. I am not discriminating against anybody that wants to wear one. But the little ones don't understand. They're five, six, seven, and eight. So I beg you, please.
Thank you. Next speaker, Nicole Campanelli, on deck, Megan Knowles.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Campanelli. I can't believe we are reliving last year, and yet here I am. Your possible official order or mandate to remask the children is not a law, but HB 241, the parental rights, is a law and was signed into law in July. Section 1014.14 states all parental rights are reserved to the parent of a minor child in the state without obstruction or interference from the state or any political subdivisions, any other government entity, or any situation. So by law, you do not have the right to undo the, I don't know, right to undo the opt-out for the masks. Sorry, I just lost track. The executive order states that parents have the right to make the decision that's best for their families regarding masking. This virus will never go away, like the flu. It's always going to mutate. We've had Alpha, Beta, Gamma, Delta, and other variants are lingering, and they always will. Will we continue to play pandemic and sacrifice our children for the small percentage of people who usually have comorbidities, which is the result of their death? It's funny, on a Facebook thread, someone stated that all the anti-mask people will be leaving their children as orphans. It's been 18 months, and we're still here. And my house had COVID. It was absolutely bearable. I have natural antibodies, which I will test again to check in a few months. I didn't test my children, but they're with me 24/7 because I am their caretaker and no one had a sniffle. But nobody talks about that, just mask up. We will not muzzle our healthy children. They will stay home if they are sick, like we did in the days of 2019 and before. Do you really want to be one of the counties that defy our governor's executive order? If we allow the government to break the law because of an emergency, they will always create an emergency to break the law. I'm so confused on why we are still counting the cases. The PCR test has been deemed unreliable. You can't trust the numbers. Children literally have a zero chance of dying from COVID unless they have a severe underlying condition like cancer, per a study by Harvard. More kids die from influenza and nobody freaks out flu season. Children need to have their immune system challenged by germs. It's how the immune system gets stronger and creates antibodies. This is probably why so many children are getting sick with RSV, because the majority of the world has masked and isolated their children for 17 months. In my house, we never isolate it. We schedule two to three play dates with friends a week throughout the pandemic. We take vitamins, play outside, and never masked. We kept our immune systems healthy, even my immune-compromised child, whose body is literally attacking itself daily. We live by faith, not by fear. Think of how many times a child touches the mask, then goes to the bathroom, touches the mask, forgets to wash her hands, touches the mask. They are a sweat-filled petri dish. Sacrificing children's mental, emotional, and physical health to give adults some false sense of security is the most selfish thing I have ever heard.
Thank you, Ms. Campanelli. Next speaker, Megan Knowles, on deck, Larissa Pacolin.
Hello, my name is Megan Knowles. And while I teach people to talk for a living, I passionately don't enjoy talking into a microphone. So if you understood the level of passion of me trying to avoid a microphone, you would then understand the level of need that I felt that I needed to come address you tonight that I needed to come address you tonight about the mask mandates. I do have two children in the district and one of which has a medical condition that causes her to pass out frequently. She can't maintain her body temperature, her blood pressure, or her heart rate. But you can't tell that by looking at her from a distance. Both of my kids actually wanted to be here tonight, but like good students, they had homework and they could not come to address that. So, here I am. I'm not here to debate on if masks work or don't work. I'm not here to change your viewpoint on what matters in COVID and what doesn't matter. I'm here to discuss a mandate to require every single child on the campus of every single school in Indian River County to do the exact same thing. Now, the last time I bought a dress that was one size fits all, it looked hideous. I looked like a sausage in it. It was loose in some places and tight in others. One size fits all just doesn't work. As a board, you understand education. We have differentiated instruction and we implement that to help children that learn at different paces. Some go faster, some go slower, some are just different. Therefore, voting against a mandate would say that every kid could fit in the, sorry, let me say that again. So, vote against mandating that every kid fits into the exact same box. Vote against a mandate that is not saying that you wouldn't wear a mask. It's saying that you can't say that every single kid needs to do the exact same thing. Voting against this actually means that you understand this is a really complex issue. It's really difficult. Everybody has a different opinion on it, but you coming in and saying that your opinion is the only one that matters by creating a mandate for everyone is just not okay. So, please continue to think about that and vote against one size fits all.
Thank you, Ms. Knowles. Next speaker Larissa Pacolin on deck, Chris Allen.
Good evening. My name is Larissa Pacolin and my son is first grader. I hope this board and school district will start talking about education, not about health, because school is obviously not a health facility. It's an educational facility. And I'm very surprised that we are against here talking about masks. So, you made a rule last year. You made a mandate that every child should wear a mask at school. And even parents do not agree with you. They send their kids with a mask. Now, there is another rule, a law, the law that Governor DeSantis signed, that parents decide, will their children wear a mask or not? Please obey this rule, obey the law. Do not ignore parental rights because parents are important and they know what to do for their children or not. I understand some parents want their children to wear a mask and totally fine, but they cannot come to me and tell me to put masks on my son because I'm not going to their grocery bucket and not mandating them what to eat or what not to eat. Health issue must be individual. Every parent deciding for themselves and for their children whatever to do or not. I know this board likes so much following CDC. Today, I open CDC website and I see they recently posted new information, how to promote in schools COVID-19 vaccination. So, if this board will promote COVID vaccines, if the schools will promote COVID vaccines, will set up vaccination clinics, will make lessons, this you can all check in the CDC website. It's very available. Everybody can look it up. If in the school will be lessons, events, and teachers will be promoting vaccines to kids, I'm not going to be part of it. I ask this board to be transparent. If you follow CDC requirements or whatever it is or whoever it is, if you do this in schools, I'm not going to be part of it. I'm not going to be, my son is not going to be part of it. I will pull out my child from school and I hope other parents too. So, please be transparent with parents this school year. Let every parent decide whatever is good for their children because masks are optional. So, parents who want these masks, their kids will continue wearing them. And please, let's start talking about serious things, about education, not about health issues. That must be untouchable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pacolin. Next speaker is Chris Allen, followed by Robin Helmede. Excuse me for my mispronunciation.
Hi, my name is Chris Allen and I'm one of the co-founders of We the People Indian River County and a vice chair for Moms for Liberty Indian River, Florida. By the second day of school, we heard of two students being discriminated against over vaccines. As of today, it's five instances that we know of. These minors are being called out for their vaccine status or preference. This is a parental rights issue and a school board needs to highly consider doing an emergency training session for teachers instead of worrying if they're wearing masks or not. Maybe direct them to the parentalrightsflorida.org to see what they can and can't say around children. And we have booklets here if you want to look through them. Because of these instances, I've had to teach my child what to say when they're confronted over this. This is a seven-year-old and I have to teach them what to say whenever, if a teacher decides to be meddlesome on what their medical preference is. Is this really the environment you want to produce for children and their parents? Aside from this happening, the day before school started, Dr. Moore sent out a Facebook video to tell parents that they must opt out via a form or note to not have their children masked. What's the point of an opt-out form if he was the first one to suggest mandatory masking in schools? Mandatory masking is a violation of Executive Order 21-175, which references the Parental Rights and emergency ruling by the Department of Health. Both point to Parental Bill of Rights and say that the school must allow parents to opt out. Doesn't mention anything about a form for it. And if you read it, also doesn't mention anything about a reason to opt out. It says they must provide an opt-out, not can or should, must. Even one of the unions on their website mentioned that we don't know the future ramifications of the opt-out form. Contrary to what Ms. Schiff, Jones, and Mr. Barefoot say, the State Board of Education said that elected officials cannot pick and choose which laws they follow. Ms. Schiff, when asked if you were partnering with parents in your decision, you immediately yelled out, "No." So, this is based on your rationale, your opinion, and what you believe is right, not about following the law. Mr. Barefoot, I saw you at the country club yesterday. You weren't wearing a mask. You were not social distancing. And you seem to be pretty quick to yell at people, even though one of the mitigations for COVID is to keeping your voice normal. And the only thing I've seen in the form notes being used for is statistics in the school. And because of that, one of the pro-mask groups, Mask IRC, has pointed this out and some of the things they've said about us is sadly, many of these children are likely to be orphans at the end of the school year. The parents are the problem. I don't understand the lack of intelligence. And I don't mind if they separated the two groups within classes, masked and unmasked. Is this what the point of the form is? Like, why do you have to have a list and tell people what percentage it is? And that's really all I have to say. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next speaker is Robin Helmede and followed by Jennifer Pippin.
Good evening. My name is Robin Yummelby. I have a student at the Flic and I have another son that used to attend Bear Beach High School, but I relocated him out of the state. It killed me not to have him, to miss out on his high school experience here, but I had to do what was best for him. You see, it wasn't COVID I feared. It was the high school environment that I feared. You have one in four students self-reporting 25% in your middle and high school, self-reporting that they are vaping nicotine and marijuana on your school campus. In the first week of school, I received multiple phone calls and one day about a fight that was out of control that ended up disrupting the school day. Those are the things that I wish you would focus on. Those are the things that I fear more. Violence and drug use in your schools and academics should be your focus. This is where your responsibility lies. Where it ends is at my medical decision-making for my child. Right now, my kid is quarantined. He was super mad. He has all A's in his classes and he knew that missing school and trying to keep up online is going to set him back. The teachers are burdened with trying to do in school as well as manage the kids that are at home because of quarantining. Frankly, the ball's being dropped at the expense of those students. By the way, he's already had COVID. So, quarantining or masking him at this point was pointless. At this moment, he's running around actually doing his regular activities, just not in school. I was told if he was vaccinated, he would be allowed to attend. Your policy kind of doesn't make sense because it shows that you're not paying attention to the science. You would know that natural immunity has proven to be more effective than vaccinating. And the sign shows that the vaccine right now has a 53% efficacy rate for the Delta variant. And that's why they are recommending the boosters. Current studies have indicated that the titters elicited by the coronavirus are much lower when compared to the natural infection. As far as masking, a study noted by the CDC shows that with optional masking, 3.8 students out of 500 were positive for COVID. Where masks were required, it was 2.4 out of 500. That's statistically insignificant. The county parents have spoken. When I drive up to the school, less than 25% of the kids are masked up. That is fine. That little boy that was up here, his parents chose for him and it worked out for them. And that's awesome. That parent has a right to direct that child to mask up. The teachers aren't more at risk. They have the right to mask up, distance themselves, and vaccinate. All these mitigations should allow our students to have a year of focus on learning and not having to deal with the distractions of mass disciplines. Let's be honest, the phone calls home telling me my kid wasn't wearing his mask correctly were a waste of teacher's time and mine. You know, if we look at the numbers, we have almost 80% in this county vaccinated. You had 68 students in the middle and high school test positive for COVID so far out of 10,502 students. That year percentage is .6%, less than 1%. Meanwhile, according to the Sub-S awareness survey in IRC, you have 11% of those students vaping and 14% marijuana. Your assessment scores were failing 50%. If you look at the math and the English, it was over 50%. Those assessments numbers were produced last year to scare me more than COVID does. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jennifer Pippin on deck, Debbie Morgan.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Pippin and I'm the mother of two children that attend school here in Indian River County. I'm one of the co-founders for We the People Indian River County and the chairman here for Moms for Liberty Indian River, Florida. Many of us parents have placed ourselves in danger the past year and a half to one degree or another as we have stood up and advocated for our children. Public ridicule, one lost their job. We had to file a lawsuit in October 2020 against the school district for the same information and reasons we started telling you in March of 2020 that the governor, for the same reason, has made masks optional in his Order 2021-175 last month. The judge at the time didn't agree with our case, but we knew then and we know now, we were absolutely correct in what we had to do. We place our children and grandchildren in even greater danger if we do nothing. We have no state masking mandate. We have no county masking mandate. No cities in our county have a masking mandate. But you want to talk about mandating it for our children again. There are teachers who got vaccinated because they didn't want to have to wear a mask. We're advocating for those teachers too because they absolutely should have the right, just as parents should for their children, per Governor DeSantis's order. It's not the government's job to protect my health, nor the school district to protect my children's health. It's the government's job to protect my rights. It's my job to protect my children's health and my own health. When you trade liberty for safety, you end up losing both. If we continue to allow the government to break the laws because of an emergency, they will always create an emergency to break the law. If the government and elected officials truly cared about the health of their students and staff, they would recommend not smoking or vaping, adults not drinking in excess, not having poor nutrition and eating habits, not having lack of physical activity or exercise, but yet, day in and day out, all we're badgered with is to wear a mask and get vaccinated. If you have to be persuaded, reminded, pressured, lied to, incentivized, coerced, bullied, socially shamed, guilt-tripped, threatened, punished, or criminalized to wear a mask or inject yourself with an NRA injection, you can absolutely be certain that's not what being promoted is in your best interest. It is absolutely your choice to wear a mask or wear two masks or to get the injection. But for the rest of us, when there is risk, there should be choice for the adults and the children. We must be free, not because we claim freedom, because we practice it. And you all, if you make masks mandatory with no option to opt out, mark my words, you're defying the governor's order. It isn't a request. It's an order. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pippin. Next speaker Debbie Morgan. Susan Meele is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Debbie Morgan. I just found out about the meeting at 4:00. So, I just felt it very important that I come and stand alongside other parents. I am definitely against any forced mandating. More shocked though, I am more shocked that this board would consider setting an example for thousands of our students to defy a governor's order and parental rights law. That's just unbelievable, but that's the example you want to set for the students that you are trying to teach in this county. Parents have gone through the proper channels to have their voices heard and parental rights laws have been passed. Executive orders have been put in place about masking our kids. And you're encouraging breaking the law. You've taken an oath and we expect you to follow the law. Why do you say parents can't defy a mandate order as of last year and all the hoops they went through, yet this is what you're discussing doing yourselves? In regards to the lawsuit that Jennifer alluded to, I also have information and I'm happy to send it to all of you. This is probably equally important for the parents sitting here, but I do know that in the District Court of Appeals over in Elatua County, there was a lawsuit that was one that sets the precedent in several counties, 32 counties, but sets it in certainly the District Courts of Appeals. And that they did say that the, there is the Florida constitutional right to privacy and the courts did uphold that and it sets a precedent. So, you know, I can see that going forward. I know that in our district, because we're in the Fourth Court of Appeals, that that could be an issue here with another. But I just want to make sure that y'all are aware that that precedent has been set in the courts. So, I would just encourage you to take your oath seriously. Take the law seriously. Our parents have fought hard for their children to allow all children and parents to have equal opportunity to mask or not mask. And the decision doesn't fall in your hands anymore. It's already been stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Next speaker Susan Meele, followed by Maria McDaniel.
Well, once again, I seem to be upstaged by the mask issue. I came to talk about curriculum, but I can relate it. In my research on curriculum and the education industry and what it's been doing, I found a study called the Project Follow Through. Back in the 60s, it was commissioned by the federal government. And it was to test and review the various teaching methods to determine which method was best for teaching reading, language, spelling, and mathematics to students in K through 3. In fact, the project was done for the Head Start program. And the focus of the study was the teaching of disadvantaged and at-risk children. The three goals of the project were to increase basic knowledge and skills, to improve cognitive and problem-solving skills, and to promote a positive self-concept, or as we call today, self-esteem. In '68, when the study began, there were a number of methods being used to teach reading. One of them was the old tried and true method a lot of us are familiar with called phonetics. And there were also some, or what we used to call saying, sound out the word. And there was also a method called the whole-word method and a number of others. In phonetics, the kids learned a set of phonetic sounds and related those to the letter or letter combinations they represent in our language. With the whole-word method, students were required to memorize whole words and then recognize them later. I would add that phonetics with a mask on could be really difficult. The study tracked students' abilities for nine years from '68 to 1977 and it tested thousands of disadvantaged children across the country and involved control groups. The direct instruction method, another word for the phonetics program and the basic skills program, was found to have the best results. The basic skills method showed the greatest improvement in the scores of disadvantaged children, moving them overall from a 20 percentile range to a 50% or closer to the national average. And the self-esteem portion increased greatly. Success breeds pride. So, I'm suggesting today that you, as a district, if you want to fill that gap, if you want to shorten the gap, reduce the gap between minority students and the rest of the population, that you ought to be looking at every curriculum you have and determining whether or not it is supported in this study. And we're in basic skills. We're at phonetics and learning how to sound out the words. And I suggest we stop blaming parents and teachers and systemic racism and look at what has been proven to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Meele. Next speaker Maria McDaniel on deck, Cody Holcomb.
Hi, my name is Mara McDaniel and I'm a freshman here at Vero Beach. And I would like, I'm so sorry. And I would like to say, wearing a mask is just as easy as wearing the dress code. I would love to go to school without the dress code, but they're there for a reason and I understand why we have to wear them. The only reason people are fighting this right now is because they are putting their comfort over their health, their kid's health, the teacher's health, and their peers' health. Kids cannot get any vaccines as of now. And the only thing that is protecting them from this deadly virus are these masks. And the right thing to do would be keep masks because, I'm so sorry. I'm just nervous. Okay, I'm just gonna restart. Okay, let's get that. Also, as a child myself, I have never seen or felt what is called the COVID stress disorder. And the correct definition of the CSD is being afraid of what's coming into contact with the virus or something that could have the virus or the effects of the pandemic. And I believe that's the real reason. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDaniel. Next speaker, Cody Holcomb, followed by Don Wilkerson.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say I'm a parent and a husband. I'm a parent of a five-year-old son, who has enrolled in kindergarten in this county. They started out with no mask mandate, no opt-out. Fine by me. Do what you want, it's your kids. Then they did the opt-out. We immediately signed the opt-out. Five days later, mandate, must wear a mask. I'm here to tell y'all, I'm an Indian River County resident. I pulled my son, my wife and I's decision. We pulled our son out, went to St. Lucie County. They have optional. We're parents. I'm not a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, don't even claim to be. I'm not going to sit out here and spew facts to you guys or opinions. I'm here to tell you, I'm a father, most important job I will ever have in my life. One of the things I'm trying to instill in my son is grow up and be a man, contribute to society, be a leader, not a follower. Stand up for what you feel is right. There is no right or wrong, guys. There isn't. With the mask mandates, there's no right or wrong. It's a parent's decision. At our new school we're at, today was my son Wyatt's first day. His class was about half and half. No bullying, no picking on each other. Kids with masks ran up and hugged my son without a mask. Big bear hug. Welcome to your new class, Wyatt. We hope you like it here. So I implore you, do not go down this road. I promise you, I'm not the only parent willing to pull his child out and drive to another county to put him in a school that lets the parents sit in the driver's seat and control what happens to their children as far as a mask mandate or vaccine is ever concerned. Again, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not a doctor. I'm just here speaking my mind as a father of a five-year-old boy who is scared out of his mind right now. We actually turned off the news, all TV to our house. Called Dish Network, here's your equipment back, we don't want it. We're not sheltering in place, we're not hiding from it, but he just doesn't need to see it. He doesn't need to know politics. He's five. Think there's an old saying, I can't remember who said it, "Let them be little." Let our kids be kids until it's time for them to be men and women. Quit cramming all this down their throats. Politics have no place in school. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Next speaker, Don Wilkerson, on deck, Donald Baldwin.
Good evening. My name is Don Wilkerson, and I just wanted to say that there is no scientific rationale for forcibly masking our schoolchildren. Governor DeSantis signed an executive order prohibiting forced masking of children in Florida schools. Parents are the ones who should make medical decisions for their children. If you defy the governor's orders and try to mask our kids again, then parents will defy you and send their kids to school with no masks. A local pediatrician told me that what we've done in masking our kids last year is lowered their immune systems, and now there's a huge rise in respiratory infections. There are consequences to your actions, and our children are the ones who have suffered because of them. They have also suffered academically and psychologically. Quit quarantining our healthy children, too. They have no place, they should not be quarantined if they're healthy. We, the people, and we, the parents, have had enough.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkerson. Donald Baldwin is up. Sandy Campaglia is on deck.
My name's Donald Baldwin, and I grew up being Koko. Koko Tigers used to be a big adversary of the Vero Beach Indians. But while growing up, I developed respiratory problems. And I didn't know what was happening, but I'll tell you, had I been forced to wear a mask, I would have been hospitalized. Found out a number of years later that it was due to allergies to furry animals, to pets. So, but my wife and I go out walking, and we walk by a school every morning, and we see masks all over the place. We know the kids are going into these schools, they're wearing masks hours and hours, and they get frustrated, and they come out, and some of them just pitch the mask wherever. These masks are going into our canals and out into the Indian River Lagoon, and you better believe they are killing the manatees. So, I just have one more question. If, with the finding that the virus can pass through the rectum, would you, are you going to mandate a mask, a rectal mask?
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Next speaker, Sandy Campaglia, on deck, Katie Swigard.
I might need a break.
My name is Sandy Campaglia, and I live in Vero Beach. My son is eight years old, and he goes to Citrus Elementary. I'm sure a lot of you are aware of what happened to him last year. Four weeks, eight weeks into the school year, he developed an infection in his mouth from wearing a mask. So he had to stay out of school for three days. I'm a single mom, I had to take off work for three days. And he had to be on a medicated mouthwash for two weeks. And it took me a little bit to get him out of the mask and into a shield, which was a lot better. So with that being said, my son will not go back in a mask, being that he was developed, you know, he developed the medical condition, he does have PTSD and anxiety, so he will not be going back in a mask. Every child is different. Every child is unique. Some children cannot wear masks, should not wear masks, and some should. But this is a decision, again, that needs to be based, be made based on the parents. We shouldn't have to co-parent with the government. We should be able to make decisions on behalf of our child, especially when it becomes to their medical well-being. And another thing, I know there's been a lot of talk about the Delta variant. So I wanted to, very quickly, the last couple seconds here, play a quick video of a phone call that I made to Cleveland Clinic. Okay? Not only did I do this to Cleveland Clinic in Our County, the Cleveland Clinic in Broward County, Jupiter Medical Center, but I called to find out if they test for the Delta variant. There is not one hospital in this state that tests for Delta variant. And you will hear the lady tell you this on the phone. Not only did I talk to ER...
Hi there. I was calling to find out, I have already had COVID before, and I've been sick now for about a week, and I was wondering if you guys have a test for the Delta variant?
We actually do not.
You don't? Is it just that...
I mean, I can speak to the team.
So she transfers me to the COVID floor, and the COVID unit tells me the same thing.
Thank you for calling Cleveland Clinic Florida. For quality assurance.
So again, you heard what she said, they transfer me to COVID unit, they say the same thing. Okay? In addition to this, my mother has stage IV lung cancer, stage IV lung, liver. She's, I've been in Cleveland Clinic for the, in four weeks for almost 20 days. She's got double pneumonia.
I was calling, I've already had COVID, and I've been sick now for about a week and on antibiotics and stuff, but it's not going away. I was wondering, do you guys have a test for the Delta variant?
Do we have a test? To test to see if you have Delta variant? I have not heard of that yet.
Okay, okay, so you don't. All right, so just be a regular COVID test?
Uh huh. Just be the regular COVID test.
All right, thank you.
Anyhow, so my mother's been in Cleveland Clinic now. She was just hospitalized last week for seven days, and then prior to that, end of July for five days. The hospitals, there's not beds in the hallways, there's not overflow of all this stuff. I took videos and recordings. The staff is telling us what's going on.
Your time's up, can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, I can. And so my mom, like I said, stage IV lung cancer, liver cancer. She just got double pneumonia. No, she didn't test positive for COVID, but pneumonia is pneumonia. She's surviving. She's 63 years old, she's home now, and she's surviving. Our children do not need to be wearing masks eight hours a day, and my child most certainly will not be.
Thank you. Next speaker, Katie Swigard, on deck, Patty Sullivan.
Good evening. Please do not take our rights as parents. Every month with the FDA vaccine approval and all the different mandates, I feel like our hands are being tied tighter and tighter as parents. Let us hold on to a little bit of freedom that we do have left, and let us decide as parents if we should mask our kids in the schools. My children have all had COVID, two of which were deemed higher risk for COVID, and they had very mild symptoms, less than a cold, it lasted a day, and we all had it, we're fine. And I'm not saying that it doesn't affect other people, I'm just saying the kids seem to not be as affected. So they all have antibodies now, and I feel like I would almost be punishing them to put a mask on, because according to the science, people with antibodies are not likely to spread the virus. Let our children be free, let them see the expression in the people's faces and their teachers, so they can greet them with a smile. I drop my kid off at school every year last year, and until this year, I never even knew what their teachers looked like, none of them. And so seeing all their faces was like, oh, that's what you look like, it's good to see a face. And I want my kids to see that, too. I don't want them to go in and see a mask in only eyes every day when they go into school. A majority of the children at my kids' school do not wear a mask, and I think that that should speak to you guys, that that's the parent's choice. That is what the parents want. As a mom of three kids, I'm just begging you guys to please let us keep our rights. Let the parents that want a mask, mask. Let the parents that do not want a mask, let them, or that do want a mask, let them mask their kids. And I thank you, guys. I know this is a lot of opinions, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Swigard. Next speaker, Patty Sullivan, on deck. Lamar talks notes on our Jacamo.
Good evening. My name is Patty Sullivan, and I've lived in Indian River County for 10 years. And for the last nine years, I have served as the State Coordinator for Parental Rights Florida, which is a state division organization of parentalrights.org, which was founded by Michael Ferris, who is now the President and CEO of the Alliance Defending Freedom. We are very aware, and I am very aware, that this is not just about a mask issue. This is not just about critical race theory. This is not about gender theory, which that's the big one that's getting ready to come as well. We have not forgotten that one. For the last three years, when I went to Tallahassee to sit in on committees, to listen to Representative Graul at other sponsors sponsor this bill, I could see the opposition from within and without, by the questions that they were asked. And I've heard these talking points from this board as well, when the bill passed. And we will not forget that. So we made this booklet to make the law that was just passed into common language, because we should not be attorneys to understand what the law is. And whether or not the governor signed the executive order, the law was already in place, that parents have the right to determine what is in the best interest of their own children in regard to their upbringing, their education, and their well-being, which is including their medical care. So even with, he used the executive order, he used the bill, the law, HB 241, as the legal underpinnings for the executive order. Even if he didn't sign that executive order, it was still a law, that parents have the right to make medical decisions for their children. And so I want to just agree with what Ms. Morgan said earlier, to defy the law, to defy the executive order, the example that you're setting for these children and these families in this county is appalling. And we need to allow parents to make these decisions. We are encouraging parents to be in it for the long haul. We are just beginning, because we saw the resistance all through the committees as we fought for the bill to be passed, and thank God it was passed. And we now have a law in the state of Florida that puts parents, it affirms parents' rights. And not only put all the rights under one umbrella, but it actually took a court case and codified it, where it says parental rights are a fundamental right. And government is not the parent. We are the parents, and we need to allow parents to make those choices for their children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. This is the last speaker under the public. The other two speakers will be speaking to one of the items that was pulled.
Good evening. I'm Lamar Noder-Jacomo, and I am a grandparent of two children in Indian River County school system. And I'm here to advocate on behalf of not only my grandchildren, but all children in Indian River County. I just wanted to remind everybody of some comments that Dr. Fauci made. Lost in the firestorm over what Dr. Anthony Fauci knew about the possibility that his agency was funding research that might have allowed COVID to escape from a Chinese lab was a bit of a bombshell. The nation's preeminent infectious disease expert never really believed that mask-wearing was effective. In an email to former Health and Human Services Secretary Sylvia Burwell on February 5, 2020, as concerns over the new coronavirus in China were just starting to make their way to the United States, Fauci assured her that wearing a mask was unnecessary. "Masks are really for infected people, to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected, rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection," he wrote. "The typical mask you buy in the drugstore is not really effective at keeping out virus which is small enough to pass through the material." A little more than a month later, he said the same thing publicly in an interview with 60 Minutes. So what's my point? My point is that science is science until a group of elites with a bunch of fancy letters behind their name decide otherwise. And that's not okay. The science says, and the Florida Department of Health Statistics say, that eight children in Florida, last I checked, and I checked several times, and it was still eight, I haven't checked in a couple of months, but eight children in Florida have died from COVID, where hundreds have died from the flu in the past. In 2019, it was over 100, 156, I think, if my memory serves me correctly. So the point is that the science does not reflect that masks help prevent the spread of COVID. And children are not dying from COVID, and we're teaching them to live in fear. We are raising a generation of children that are afraid of everything. They've been told by Greta Thunberg that we're all going to die in 12 years, because their grandparents and their parents didn't care enough to protect the environment. We are raising a generation of kids who live in fear. They're not learning facts, they're learning fear. I know emotionalism and fear sells, but it's not fact, and we need to be teaching our children facts. So let's get back to education, because our scores are dropping precipitously in our county, and let's get back to educating our kids, and let's get back to real science, and let's teach them the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the public input. I'm sure that many of you would like to respond to... Uh, that, that's the end of the public input. I'm sure that, that many of you would like to respond to, uh, comments that were made. Uh, Dr. Moore, is there, would you like to comment before we open it up to other board members?
Uh, for the chair, my, my recommendation would be is that we move to the item that was, the majority of the speakers spoke to, so we can address it all, all at one time.
Okay. Uh, this is Baron Board?
Yeah, there, there was an-
There was no item on the agenda for this.
Yes, there is. It's on the action agenda.
There is, it's, it's not on the action agenda.
It's on the updated action agenda that happened today. It's about the mask policy.
Oh, online? No, printed.
I, I don't-
I didn't look at the printed, but it was updated after our meeting this morning.
After, okay. Alright.
So, I want to talk about, um, the vaccine concern that came up. I don't see her in the room, but there was a parent that said that, um, kids, there have been four cases where, uh, kids were bullied or something about vaccines. I would stress to that parent to please contact the superintendent or the principal and get to the bottom of that, right away. That should not be happening in our schools.
Alright. Um, at this point, we move for approval of the consent agenda. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, move. Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Alright. Now we move to those items that were pulled from the consent agenda. The first being item eight A. Uh, Dr. Moore, that was your item.
Through the, through the chair, i- item eight A was added this app. CWA, we've already approved it.
Okay.
We did that.
The next item that was pulled is nine.
Nine A.
Nine A.
Mrs. Rosario.
Mrs. Rosario.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Um, earlier today, we talked about the unitary status sustainability policy. Um, it kind of got, um, held up in, um, because of time. Um, and the recommendation was for any one of us to be able to pull it to continue that conversation. So, I, I just thought it appropriate, it would be appropriate. I didn't see it on the agenda unless it was added here. Which I don't see. But, um, so, we, I, I think I'm, I'm gonna actually allow the superintendent to talk a little bit about it, and then, of course, board members, if we can just maybe continue or summarize our thoughts on it, where we are. Um, I know, um, uh, my, well, I'll, I'll send, yeah, I'll, I'll talk, I'll hand it over to Dr. Moore, and then, um-
Thank you, Ms. Rosario. I, I will present, present the item. This is a policy that was, uh, in May brought forward by board member, uh, Doc Jones, requesting that I engage in the work with the NAACP regarding the creation of a sustainability policy. Sustainability policy was to focus in on the areas within our desegregation order, uh, surrounding our, our joint plan. So, the joint plan was a three-year plan that was agreed upon, uh, by the School District of Indian River County, as well as the NAACP. That is the contract that has been signed between the two entities to implement action. The district would implement action over the course of a three-year period, and then if they implement that work over the course of that three-year period, uh, they would have the opportunity, they being the district, to obtain unitary status. In preparation for unitary status, whether it is achieved at the end of this calendar year or whether it is achieved in five years from now, is the creation of a sustainability policy that ensures that the district, the leaders of the district, the school board members, the superintendent of schools, continue to ensure it is a priority of those individual leaders. The research has been clear, which was the driving force behind the item. When a district obtains unitary status, it quickly returns or regresses back to the data points that led them to, uh, having to seek unitary status, having to desegregate a school system. That's what we're doing, uh, in the year 2021. So this was a proactive, uh, approach. Uh, staff engaged with, with a, a number of meetings to create this unitary, the sustainability policy with the NAACP. Uh, we believe we reached consensus. We wanted to work through this policy, uh, and then engage in additional work moving forward. On Sunday evening, uh, we received information that the NAACP would no longer, uh, want to be connected or in, or support, as it was written, the sustainability policy. This sustainability policy empowers, uh, a committee, uh, specifically called the Superintendent's Unitary Sustainability Work Group. Uh, this would be five members of our community that have the opportunity, over the course of five years, to continue in a public, uh, place, which would be a school board meeting, to provide feedback on the progress the district is continuing to make, or what corrective action would be taken. This policy directs the work of the superintendent. This policy requires a supermajority to make any modifications to the policy prior to its sunsetting over the course of five years. This is a policy that protects this very important work, uh, and ensures whenever unitary status is obtained, uh, the district continues to put its focus, uh, on that work in order to ensure that it does not regress. As a result of the request from the NAACP, I did make two modifications to the, um, policy that is posted. First of which is to modify it, um, and I'll, and I'll read it. This is kind of getting in the weeds, but it's how you present an item, I guess. We shifted some language, and it basically, this is all requirements associated with the joint plan have been fulfilled. So what that basically means is, once the district obtains unitary status, whenever that would be, uh, the current equity committee, which is already seated and doing their work, they are the entity that was agreed upon by the two parties in this lawsuit to evaluate and monitor the progress of the implementation of what was agreed upon in the joint plan. That committee, once unitary status is achieved, continues to function for two additional years. Now, this committee would kick in two years, w- once that, that equity committee has been in place for two, for two years. We also, uh, recommended who would be sitting on this board, and the recommendation now will be five individuals who would be elected, uh, by the school board uh, at the, uh, organizational meeting. And that would afford me the opportunity to create procedures, uh, a nominating process, a submitting of a resume, a letter of interest in regards to why individuals in our community would want to serve and monitor the implementation of this work over the course of a one-year period, uh, which would be in place over the course of, of five years. So I thi- I think this policy is groundbreaking work. I, I think this policy provides a great deal of authority to the individuals who sit on this committee. It charges them with great responsibility. The responsibility of ensuring the district continues to move, uh, a body of work that had been ignored for far too long. Um, and that is, that is the item. What is being proposed this evening is to send it to public hearing. So as we are creating a policy, we're not approving that policy tonight. So, my recommendation is that we set it for public hearing. Uh, we are very aggressive in sharing this policy, the purpose of this policy through social media, on our webpage, uh, and the speaking that I do throughout the community. Uh, really, it's just not posting it in a paper, but being intentional to have the entire community weigh in on this policy. That public hearing would take place in a board meeting thirty days after, uh, we set it for public hearing. So it would be posted, opportunities to view the policy, and then after thirty days, it would come back. And this would give the board a level of comfort regarding, um, the community's input on what would be a policy in the future uh, that would be driving this very important work. And if that time, if there are any modifications or changes based on the input, um, that came to the board, the board would have that action. I will be clear. This is a policy. This is a primary responsibility of the board. This is the board's work. This policy is the board's work. So that, that is the item. Uh, may have been a lengthy explanation, but I think that brings everybody up to speed.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. One of the reasons, um, why I pulled it is because, um, um, well, we didn't, like I said, complete the conversation earlier, but I still hold to, um, originally, I, uh, was in support of this policy for today, um, until hearing the response from the NAACP pulling out of this collaborative work. Um, one of the reasons why it's so important to, um, take that into consideration, board members, is because the purpose of creating this was to show the courts that we're working together, that we, we are, um, in this together, that we are striving to achieve unitary status, and that after unitary sta- or rather, this then would be submitted to the courts so that the courts would see the work that both parties have agreed to, um, after unis- full unitary status is achieved. Um, but at this point, that's not gonna happen, because the NAACP pulled out. Um, so then I come back to the idea, the question, then, then what's the purpose? Um, if you look at the written policy of the unitary status as it's written, it's very similar to the current joint plan that we have. There's not very much difference. It is also very, um, similar to the work that we have written, obviously, in our, um, strategic plan. Uh, what is different here, as Dr. Moore mentioned, is the work group, the sustainability work group, which essentially looks just similar, not just, which essentially looks like the equity committee. So it would supplant the equity committee. Correct? Just that one question, sorry.
Through the-
Equity committee, if we reached full unitary status, sorry, the equity committee would continue for two years, and this would then take over after the two years, or would this immediately supplant the work?
Th- this would take place after the two years of the equity committee would be monitoring-
Right.
-this work. That was agreed upon in the joint plan that was signed, um, almost three years ago. What this does in the body of work is not going to be done in two years, or three years, or even ten years. It ensures regardless of who is sitting at this dais, who has the, uh, privileges serving as superintendent, that the work continues, and it continues in a very public, uh, public way, making our practice very, very public, where we continue to have that. So the intent of the creation of this policy, and we did research in looking at what other districts were doing, this is much more aggressive. This is much more, uh, it, it's bold, and what it's charging the then-school board and superintendent to do is really solely about continuing the momentum, memorializing the effort under the leadership of this board to ensure it continues. And this is about the, the children. And this is about creating a community in which every single child feels safe, feels embraced, and knows when they walk in a classroom, they will see others that look like them. They will see others that care for them, uh, and they will receive a quality education, have complete access to the resources, um, and sports and activities and clubs, um, that they deserve to have. We don't want to see any regression in that. I don't think there's anyone on this dais that would even fathom that not taking place. But this is a, not necessarily, I, 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 I wouldn't say this is for the courts. I, I don't think it's for the courts. I think it's to really memorialize the work moving forward, uh, to push it out and have the same level of th- authority that we currently have. We're under a, a joint plan, uh, through a, a federal court. Uh, we want to keep that same level of priority once they obtain unitary status, to continue to build upon it.
So that work would continue anyway? That work would still be in place anyway, through school improvement plans, through the strategic plan, through our efforts on a day-to-day basis? The work of the district still moves forward. I just don't see a reason why we should rush this. This is a policy, um, that would be greatly enhanced if we had the collaboration of the NAACP, and I think that we're doing this a little too soon. I think we need to allow Dr. Shafdi to continue to work with Dr. Warrior as they have. They just begun the work to build trust, to build, uh, consensus. Um, we are moving into the third or the fourth report, the, that needs to be sent, I think, fifth?
Sixth.
Sixth.
The sixth report that needs to be submitted to the courts. Um, I believe that's in September. Am I correct with that? And then we have a joint meeting in, I believe, November. So we still have some time to build consensus and to really get where I think we could be collaboratively. Um, I don't want this to be, um, work that we are doing in isolation. I really want us to be able to work together and get everyone on the same page as much, as much as possible. Again, even if this were approved today, it's not going to take effect for the next, until the next three years, essentially, maybe. Uh, depending on when we reach unitary status, it may take us another two years to reach full unitary status. We don't know that. Um, hopefully not, but... The idea is, there's no, there's no rush for this right now. I think that we could hold on to it. It still stays as is. I'm not asking to change anything in it. I'm just hoping that we can hold it um, until our next, um, report and/or, uh, November's meeting collaborative, the collaborative meeting with the equity committee and the NAACP, where we get the full, um, uh, recommendations from the equity committee. It would be nice to get some feedback from them, even on this. Um, and we also haven't heard from community members on this either. So, that's where I stand, board members.
So let me, let me just clarify, then I'll give it back to the, the chair. My recommendation would be, you, you set it for a public hearing. Allow the thirty-day window. Be aggressive in marketing and advertising, um, and conduct that public hearing, and let's see if we can't energize the entire community to come out and give us feedback on something that's so important. And maybe leveraging this as an opportunity to cast out to the entire community, because this should be a priority, and I think that it is for our entire community. Um, maybe the feedback received to this board charges me to go back and recreate the policy based on some of that feedback. I, I agree with you. Timing is not a, a issue in this particular arena. But allowing, going out to get that feedback does charge me to take the very next step in terms of, you know, there's an entire community out there that should be afforded the opportunity to give feedback on something that is so important.
I'll just finish with one thought. We could still do that. We can still put it out there. We can still leave it out there without, um, without the thirty-day window. And, and, and we can still receive feedback. We haven't heard back from the equity committee on this either. I mean, that can still be done. On many other policies, I have heard the board and you, um, Dr. Moore, who have said, why should we approve a policy if we're just going to revise it in a month or two or down the line? If we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Let's do it right the first time, so that we don't have to keep revising policy.
Uh, Dr. Jones?
If it's okay, I'd like to hear from Mr. Seymour, just a few minutes on your thoughts here. Um, I think the one big difference is, yes, uh, this is part of our strategic plan. Our African-American Achievement Plan is part of the strategic plan. What the expectations are, we're talking about here clearly. But if this goes ahead, and we wait thirty days and then have public input, this would be policy. So there's a lot of difference, just not in our strategic plan or African-American Achievement Plan. This is policy, which is one of the, uh, largest things that we do as a board. So, Mr. Seymour, I know that Dr. Shafdi and Dr. Warrior- So, Mr. Seymour, I know that Dr. Shafdi and Dr. Warrior worked on this, and just your thoughts in general about moving this forward, or waiting, or what do you think?
To the chair. Yes, it is a lot of work that has gone into it, and there's a lot more, and we know that. But I think that we've established that communication and forward. Sometimes we don't agree.
Your mic, your mic. Sorry, babe. This be on.
Sometimes that, we know that there are things that are tough to talk about, but I believe the work that we put into it has opened up those doorways where we can have that civil conversation. And of this sustainability policy, many of the things that we have discussed, and we continue to discuss, we know for a fact that it's going to be, you know, a lot of work to make this really happen. But in saying that, we have opened our doors to that communication, and hopefully have gotten the feedback that we thought would make this manageable. And also, thinking back, when Dr. Jones mentioned that, you know, this is in good-faith effort, it is a good-faith effort to continue that dialogue in a positive way, where all agree that we are working in one direction to, you know, achieve those attainable goals. So I, it's hard to say, but I know for a fact that we're going to continue that work and that dialogue.
And I understand Ms. Rosario's concern after we got that email, I think it was Sunday night, but I just want to reiterate what Dr. Moore said. This is for the children in this school district. Haven't been here since 1967, but when it was revised in 1994, I certainly have been here since then, and I think that, I'm going to say when, when we do get unitary status, that this is ready to go. And again, after the 30 days, we may have some input that we want to change some things, understood. And as Ms. Berenbork said earlier, this shouldn't just be something we put in the paper. We need to make sure it's out there. We need to call community members, hey, take a look at this, please come and give input at the public hearing so we can move forward. And I just think that that is the way to go at this time, and then if we have to regroup or take a look at a couple other things, I think it's a great, great thing that no matter what happens, this will be good for our children. Because if you look at the desegregation order, if you look at all the information on the joint plan, they specifically are naming that here in policy, and I think that's so very important. So this will live on in this school district. Thank you.
Dr. Schiff?
To clarify, my understanding, and this is for Dr. Moore, my understanding is that it is possible that we may apply to the court for unitary status this December. Is that true?
Through the chair, this school board approved an item earlier in the school year aligned to the joint plan, in the joint plan, the authority at the direction of the school board can be given to the Equity Committee to conduct the implementation and monitoring and provide feedback to the courts, whether we've met the criteria within the joint plan to obtain unitary status. You made that decision to give that monitoring and creation of the report to the Equity Committee. The adverse would be creating that report with the NAACP. The route that was taken by this board is to have the Equity Committee do that, which was jointly agreed upon. That's the process in which we're taking. The Equity Committee will begin to meet, review each of the sections within the joint plan, look at the criteria that was defined by the judge and agreed upon by the two entities to determine, has the district made progress in those specific areas? And they will make a, you know, a recommendation based on that progress or lack of progress within those areas aligned to the joint plan. That report goes to the judge. If the Equity Committee believes we've met the criteria in each of those sections, then yes, that would be the appropriate response, that would be the time to seek unitary status. If we do not receive it in one, two, three, or four of the different sections, then the joint plan directs us to work with the NAACP to advise the court on what the next steps would be. That next step, in my mind, would be a brand-new joint plan, a recreation or modification of the joint plan, a modified timeframe. The joint, the initial joint plan was agreed upon by the two parties. If there was a need to continue, it would need to be collectively determined, and the joint plan defines that we inform the judge what the next steps would be.
So what this revised policy does, so we have been working with the NAACP on the joint plan for a little over three years now. This policy, as I understand it, was developed in collaboration with the NAACP, who originally, as I understand it, were in support of it and then withdrew their support, according to the documentation we received. So upon their having withdrawn their support, we had a decision to make about whether to move forward with the policy and expand community input and engagement, and shift the way that the role of the Equity Committee would continue beyond the joint plan and unitary status by expanding that to a board-approved process, as we discussed earlier, where members of the community would be select, would have an application process and would be selected by the board in order to assure that the work continued. So while the work will continue in the district, while there's the African-American Achievement Plan, and there's the strategic plan, and all of the things that Mrs. Rosario mentioned, what a board like this does, or what a committee like this does, is to serve as an oversight body for the district. Because we will continue to do the work. What we are building in, in this policy, is a way to have additional eyes on the work that are not simply the eyes of the district. And we invite the community to do that. We invite the community in to view, critique, witness, support, and if necessary, reject what it is that we're doing. So to me, to move forward with that is, A, valuable, B, we're not approving a policy tonight. What we're doing is saying, let's put this out to the community to see how they feel about that, and invite them to comment in writing or in 30 days directly to us, and then make a decision about whether we approve the policy, whether we amend the policy, whether we table the policy, or what we want to do at that point. So I would be in support of setting this for a public hearing tonight.
Okay, Mrs. Berenbork, any comments?
Yeah, the concern I had, again, was when we create policy or put policy out there, sometimes we open it up, nobody speaks, close it, vote. This is an important one. This is one that's going to move us forward forever, hopefully. And I think it's important that we do, if we are going to vote on putting this forward tonight, that we make sure, that was my biggest hesitation, we make sure that it's well communicated out there, so people do have a voice, so that people can come and tell us, either in writing ahead of time or in person. But that information needs to get out there. And if that's the case, then I'm willing to do it, understanding that if somebody does come forward with something, that we consider that revise, which I think we would do anyway in a policy. So I'd be okay with voting on that, as long as it's well advertised.
All right, the only comment I would make, while in some respects is disappointing that the NAACP pulled out, maybe the good news is, it's now not viewed as specific to the NAACP, but to everybody. And in many respects, even better. Obviously, it would be inclusive of the NAACP and any other group of students that, in one form or another, would be covered by such a policy. So I'm in support of moving this forward as well. So...
So can we call the question? Can we call it and vote?
Call the question.
Motion.
Oh, move to approve the, putting the sustainability policy out for a public hearing. I'm sorry, what? Did I say that right?
The agenda item includes two policies, not just a sustainability plan.
You're right. Oh, so do we, is there any discussion on the other one? I guess we have to. There's, what's the other one?
That was Mr. Bass's.
Payroll deductions.
There was what? Pardon me?
The other one is payroll deductions, if we had any comment on that.
It was from Mr. Bass.
Unless...
No, no questions.
Okay, so I move that we put these two policies out for a public hearing.
And a second?
Second.
Dr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero. We now move, there have been two items added to action, item 13B and item 13C. Item 13B is approval of face coverings within the school district of Indian River County. This is an action item, and I would invite, we have two members of the community would like to speak to this. Tiffany Justice, you are up.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Moore. I am the mother of four children in this school district. Masks are hurting some of our kids. Parents are being forced to watch their children suffer from subclinical harms from masking. We have been coming to this school board, making you aware of this issue for over a year and a half. I submit that it is an act of malfeasance to require children to wear masks against the informed judgment and consent of the parent. I respect the right of every parent to choose whether or not to mask their child. There are 6,935 days in your child's life from zero to 18. As a mother, you make medical decisions for your child every day. We are the expert of our own children, and we stand united in our defense of our right to direct the health care of our children. With due respect to the school board attorney, I believe by requiring mandatory masking in a medical form, you are subverting the plain language of the Department of Health. I served as a board member in this district from 2016 to 2020, and from the time I raised my hand at this podium and swore in the oath of office to defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of Florida, until the last day I served on this board, never was it acceptable for us to violate state statute or the rule of law. As board members, you are required to follow the DOH's guidelines, and not doing so is illegal. Florida Statute 112311 requires public officials to uphold the Constitution of Florida in its entirety. Florida Statute 768, Section 28, covers sovereign immunity, and when a public official might be personally liable for legal fees and monetary damages. Simply put, when you stop acting within state law, you may lose the protection of the state and become personally liable for damages. Is the school board attorney going to advise the board that they have the legal right to defy the governor's order contrary to the state constitution as an officer of the court? Do the board members understand that sanctions have been unanimously approved by the State Board of Education, which could include their removal from this board? Per 76828, are the board members aware that when you act outside of the law, you may not be entitled to representation by the government? We want to partner with our children's schools, but we do not co-parent with the government. Give every parent the right, recognize the right of every parent, to direct the health care of their child. Thank you.
Other speaker is Jennifer...
She spoke of her consent.
Oh, she did?
Yes, I asked if you wanted to speak. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was Jennifer.
No.
Hi. Hi. I thought I kept my address.
I can't...
Hi, my name is Jennifer Oganowski. I just moved here with my family three weeks ago, my husband and my three children, from Connecticut. I sold my house, I quit my job of 23 years, we left our family and friends to come to Florida because I was very much in favor of Governor DeSantis's advocacy of parents' rights to make decisions for their children. And I didn't necessarily have that where we were, and it was very attractive to us, enough so that we would leave our life to come here. I have a daughter who's a senior in high school, she was really looking forward to a normal school year for her senior year. I just would implore you to please leave our parents' rights where they stand and adhere to the governor's order. Thank you.
All right, so this item and the motion that I would read, that we can then discuss and make a decision on, approval of face coverings be mandatory for all students in pre-K through eighth grade, while indoors, when social distancing is not possible, and while utilizing school transportation. Parents have the opportunity to opt out their children, from wearing, child or children, from wearing a face covering, providing documentation from a medical provider, for example, Florida licensed physician, physician's assistant, psychiatrist, or psychologist, or due to needs outlined in their IEP or Section 504 plan indicating that they need this accommodation. Students who received an exemption from wearing a face covering during the 2021 school year will automatically be granted an exception for the current academic year. These requirements will be fully implemented on Monday, August 30, 2021. The outlined requirements will expire on September 15, 2021, unless extended prior to that date. So I will open it up to discussion, to, it was discussed at length today. Dr. Moore, I don't know whether you have some comments, and then we will have the other school boards.
Through the chair, I think that would be appropriate. And as I look at the reality in which we're currently in, for me, it's about one thing, and that is ensuring that we have the opportunity to provide a free and appropriate public education. And what we are currently implementing, if we do not change or modify relatively quickly, you will see closure of classrooms, closure of grade levels, closure of schools. And there is no one more committed to honoring the right and responsibility of a parent. And there, as a superintendent, to create a recommendation or ask you to support or approve a recommendation that is so controversial is hard to do. But I believe it's the right thing to do. I believe we are in a time in which we need to quickly respond to our reality, based, if the trend continues, and the trend continued today. So as we had the debate and discourse, we had an additional 21 staff members identified as being positive, an additional 20 students identified as being positive. The one-week period is surpassing three in four weeks of what we experienced last year. It is something that we need to respond to. So as a superintendent, I want to keep schools open, I want to have parents to have confidence. So we looked at attendance, and as described today, there are parents making decisions because they're, they do not feel safe sending their young children to school, based on the number of cases at a school. Attendance is 78 in the 80s in some of our elementary schools. In our secondary schools, specifically our high schools, the ability to manage and operate those schools is much easier to do, based on the volume of people that are there, the teachers who can cover individual classes, students move from class to class to class, one-eighth of the teachers are available to support that instruction. The data isn't at this particular point saying for us to respond there. What this recommendation does is allow us to honor the exemptions that were in place last year with a great level of ease, allow the time for individuals who... with a great level of ease, allow the time for individuals who need to require, obtain that documentation, the time to do it, and then implement it, and then come back to this board at its very next meeting, which would be September 14th. That would give us the time to evaluate this reality, to determine if any modifications or changes, or if we could be more clinical in terms of looking at rates and where they currently are by school site. But right now, in the midst of this particular time, if we're going to keep schools open, this is a necessary step. Is it a forever step? Absolutely not. Is it a step that we want to do for an extended amount of time? Absolutely not. But when you look at the data and you talk to the medical professionals, it is the recommendation that I think we should be following. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Moore. Other comments from other board members?
Yeah, I think I'd like to ask Suzanne to not repeat everything that you said this afternoon, but if you could highlight some of the legal issues, that I think that would be helpful. I'm sorry, Ms. deGrasse, I shouldn't have used your first name.
Of course, thank you, and I'll try to not be as lengthy as I was earlier today. As we know, the governor did pass an executive order directing that state agencies adopt some emergency rules. So let's be clear, the governor's executive order doesn't direct school boards to do anything. The executive order is directed at state agencies to adopt emergency rules. And those agencies, state agencies, did that. The Department of Education adopted two emergency rules, which are really not under discussion this evening. And then the Department of Health also adopted an emergency rule. Under the Chapter 120 of Florida statutes, emergency rules are good for ninety days unless the agency takes action to adopt the rule as a typical or a regular through regular rulemaking. So the emergency rule that the Department of Health adopted is good for ninety days. And that particular rule does include one sentence that says that if masking is going to be required, I'm paraphrasing, that there should be, or there shall be, a parental opt-out. Now, we, school boards, have dealt with other regulations from the Department of Health in the past, usually with regard to vaccinations or other health issues with students. And the Department of Health, when it does adopt its regulations, also adopts forms and specific information that must be included when they are looking for these opt-outs. But for this particular emergency rule, we don't have those details. It just says an opt-out. It doesn't say that it's an unfettered opt-out. It doesn't give any details of what can and cannot be included in that opt-out. It just says an opt-out. We also are familiar with eight other school boards in the state of Florida who have adopted a variety of policies or protocols or procedures with regard to students and masks. And they're all a little different. But of the eight that we are reading about in media coverage, there are specific policies or protocols being adopted which require masks of students, allow parents to opt out with certain documentation provided. And the two that have made themselves through a process with the State Board of Education, both Broward and Alachua, those policies required some form of medical documentation in order for a parent to opt their student out of a mask. The Commissioner of Education sent letters to both of those school boards advising them that he believed that they were in violation of the Department of Health rule. And the State Board of Education convened a meeting in order to discuss the findings of the Commissioner of Education, and the State Board of Education subsequently issued an order to both of those school boards declaring that they were, that their protocols or policies, as explained at the meeting, were in violation of the Department of Health rule, and it was mandatory masking of students unless there was some form of medical documentation to provide an exemption for the student. Those orders went on to say that the, under the authority of state law, the State Board of Education was going to be withholding funding from those school boards in the amount of their salary allocation for school board members. The orders went on to say that there would be specific reporting requirements of those school boards. And of course, these requirements could change over time, depending upon actions or inactions of the school board. The legal authority of the State Board of Education is set out in statute. The State Board of Education is a state agency essentially, and so their authority comes from a statute. And there is a statute here in the state of Florida that allows the Commissioner of Education to oversee all public education. And it also allows the State Board of Education to take certain financial actions in the event a school board fails or refuses to comply with a law or with a state board rule, a state board rule. So when we look at that statute and authority of the State Board of Education, certainly, they have the authority to take a look at actions or inactions by school board members. And they have over time, and over the past several years, they've done that. In this particular case, the orders that were entered with regard to Broward and Alachua, and I'm not going to presume that similar orders will be entered against the other six school boards that also have kind of done something similar. We're waiting to see what action is going to be taken by the Commissioner of Education to start the process. The authority of the state board is that they need to declare either the law or the state board rule that is being violated. As I mentioned a few moments ago, we are talking about a Department of Health rule, not a state board rule. So that part of the statute doesn't seem applicable in this particular case. So we would have to look solely for a law. And the law that's referenced in the preamble information to the emergency rule adopted by the Department of Health is the Parental Bill of Rights. The Parental Bill of Rights doesn't talk about face coverings, right? So it's not going to be that specific. The Parental Bill of Rights does talk to the issue of making medical decisions or the ability to control the medical decisions of a particular student resides with the parent. And that's kind of the legal issue that lawyers are going to love arguing for time immemorial. In the First District Court of Appeal, and I think one of the speakers earlier mentioned the First District Court of Appeal and the Alachua School Board, or the Alachua County litigation that resulted in the First District Court of Appeal issuing a ruling saying that face masks were a medical device. That's the First District Court of Appeal. Indian River is in the Fourth District Court of Appeal. Palm Beach County had a similar lawsuit, and the Fourth District Court of Appeal, back in January, issued its opinion. And in the Fourth District, the court held that face masks were not considered a medical device or a medical treatment. So what a mess. We've got two courts that disagree with each other. And so typically in this situation, these opinions would be put up to the Florida Supreme Court, and the Florida Supreme Court would decide it for us, and we would get that guidance back, and then the entire state would know what to do. But at the moment, those counties within the First District Court of Appeal, to the northern part of our state, those counties and those school districts are under an appellate court decision which says face masks are considered a medical device or a medical treatment. Those counties and school boards in the Fourth District Court of Appeal, which is where Indian River is, are under an appellate court decision which has come to the conclusion that face masks are not a medical treatment or are not a medical device. So what we were discussing earlier today is there are differing interpretations of the law. But the only thing the state board can do according to its statute, it gives its authority, is define a law that a board is violating or a state board rule that we're violating in order to hold us financially responsible under that law. The other possibility is the governor, under the Florida constitution, Governor DeSantis, also has the authority to remove elected or appointed officials. School boards would fall in this category under the Florida constitution. And if the governor believes that board members have violated the criteria as set forth in the Florida constitution, the governor could remove a board member. And if that board member wished to contest that removal, it would result in a hearing in front of the Senate. The governor has exercised that authority since he's taken office. He's exercised it a few times, so that is always a possibility. But we are essentially looking at differing interpretations of one sentence in the Department of Health rule, and how boards will they'll implement that rule in your individual districts. Did I miss anything? I don't remember if I missed anything.
Thank you. And I appreciate hearing it all again.
Dr. Jones, did you want to comment?
We can come back to me.
Well, in our long discussion this afternoon, we brought up a lot of items. I guess, Dr. Moore, the one thing that I want to ask you about is why is this just K-8 and not 912? For consistency.
Thank you, through the chair, because I am trying to be consistent. And as I evaluate the data, I'm looking at where we're having struggles to maintain the operation of schools. And maintaining the operation of schools and three, close to four of our elementary schools is very, very hard to do. As I mentioned today, Mr. Meyer's entire team has been deployed. Ms. Dampier's team is on standby. Instructional coaches are in classrooms. Media specialists are in classrooms. We are making every effort, because it's the right effort to make, to ensure quality instruction is taking place in the midst of what our reality currently is. We're seeing, we're not seeing that in the two high schools for a number of reasons. A, they're very large, the exposure rate just isn't there. So to do one sweeping thing for all when the data right now isn't currently telling me that is the, my response to your particular question. Now, in ten days from now, whenever we come back to this next board meeting, if the data is telling a different story, we would have that recommendation. If the data is telling us a better story at the next board meeting in response to what we see in our schools now, we can provide a different recommendation. My goal and my intent is not to be in masks. You know, the one person who dislikes the masks, that's definitely me, as anyone else here. But it is, it is very, very, very hard to do. It's fine, it's fine, big boy, it's all good. So a hundred percent, a hundred percent willing to make a recommendation based on the information that we have in being able to maintain the operation of schools and providing quality instruction to our staffs. What we're currently doing right now is not working. You can compare us to the other counties, and we fail miserably. Parents are choosing to keep their children at home based on the environment in which we are providing. That's the truth. That's something that we cannot allow to have. Parents are going to say, ah, free and appropriate public education, not for my kid, not today. Because I can't trust the environment is safe and secure. And that is, that is the truth.
Only reason I said that is because, you know, when this hit us in March 2020, and we had to cancel everything, as you know, the proms, graduations, so, so many things, which was horrible for our students. And then when we went back to school last year, we mandated masks throughout the year, and we had a pretty good, normal year. We had our graduations, we had our proms, you know, coming out of the box on some things, but we had a pretty normal year. And as a high school principal, you do your best so that, you try to have a year without interruptions, and I hope that we don't have to, I really do. But as far as for the safety of our students and staff, I think the three weeks is a good, is a good thing to do, that we look at it, come back, continue to monitor it, and do the best we can for our students and staff.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to go through all of the data. I don't talk, usually I'm brief. This afternoon, I went on and on and on because I had done so much questioning and research, and I know we all do, but it was information I wasn't sure if you all had known about or received. That's why I went on and on. Anybody who wants to see it can watch this afternoon. I question whether or not the numbers we're getting from our hospital are correct. I question a lot of things. But I go back to the oath that we all took, and that oath said basically, follow state law, follow school board rules. And last year, I voted against what people wanted, which was take masks off kids. And the reason why I did that is because we had an emergency executive order from the governor. And I take that seriously, that we have laws in place and we have a governor that says, when you call up there, call the DOE. DOE says follow CDC guidelines, and that's what we went through for all last year. Every time I called, that's what I was told. So now, we have another law, and we have a different executive order. You know, just to sideline something I thought of, when I was a principal, you make decisions in emergencies when parents aren't available to make that decision. In this case, parents are available to make these decisions. And I'm a little frustrated with the fact that, you know, last year, I was worried because none of us knew what we were getting into. And again, something I said this afternoon is, here we go again with Delta, and now what happens when Lambda comes? Because here we go again, we're going to have this issue. You made the comment that you hope it's not for an extended amount of time. That's what we were told last year. And it went on and on and on and on and on, to the detriment of children. So I understand and concerned that people have a concern with, you know, they want all the kids masked because it's not easy to tell your child to take, keep a mask on when the other kids aren't masked. I get that. I get, I want other people to have a mask on to help protect my child. Well, you can double mask. I do that on a plane. I'll be real honest with you, I've been doing that for a while on a plane because I know how planes work and the recycled air. I don't want anything anybody's got on that plane. So I'm going to tell you that that's something I choose for myself to do. We do need to take some sort of action to help our community. I get that, I get why we're here. But none of us know if this is the right action to take. But I have issues with continuously taking decisions from parents. I went along with it last year because we had an emergency order from the governor, and the governor saying, you know, I need you to protect the health and welfare of your community and your kids. We were under something unprecedented before. Now we've been dealing with it for a year or more. So my vote is not against mandatory masking, it is against not partnering with parents and lessening the potential penalties from the state. School board, the state school board has already initiated penalties against other districts. I'm one for standing up. I'm not worried about getting de-seeded or whatever. I'm old, I can retire. That doesn't bother me. What I want to do is make the right decision for our kids and for our community. And it is hard to make this decision. It is not an easy one, Mr. Barefoot, you said that this afternoon, it's not that easy. Because everybody has an opinion, everybody tells you, oh, you need to do this, you need to do that. You won't believe how many emails we have on both sides. I have been told, and I know you all have been told, that if a child dies, it's on us. How unfair is that when your child is going all over the place? You know, that sort of thing, that's bullying tactic. We're trying to make the best decision we can here with the data that we have and with the information that we have. This is not an easy decision. If it was an easy decision, I'd say, sure, let's mask everybody, let's go. This is not. So every vote against the executive order takes more money away from our school district. You might say, well, it's one-twelfth of the salary of a board member. You might say, well, it's one-twelfth of a salary of a board member. It comes out of the board's budget, or the school district's budget, not our pocket. But I thank you for at least putting a three-week time span on this, so we can at least, if I can read the room this afternoon, if we have the votes to vote for this, then I implore you, in three weeks, we need to revert, revert to looking at data, please. Because at this point, you know, we have laws. We need to partner with our parents. I know some parents want us to say, put masks on kids, on other kids, not their kids. So my question is, now are we practicing medicine by doing that? And I have a real concern with that, because, again, we have two different rulings on that. We have a ruling to the north saying, that is practicing medicine. We have a ruling to the south saying, it's not practicing medicine. So our judges can't even decide what that rule is. That's why this is so difficult. So I can't, I can't support doing this, because of the oath that I took, and that I understand that parents have these rights to what is best for their children.
Okay, Mrs. Rosario.
Thank you. So we are not in a state of emergency. We are not in a state of emergency. In fact, the Department of Health rule states, given, and this is a quote, "Given that a majority of schools will resume in-person learning for the 2021 to 2022 school year within the next four weeks, there is insufficient time to adopt the rule through non-emergency process." But they're not saying that we are in an emergency, they're just saying, because the time period in which this discussion, of course, what they were trying to come up with, and what they did come up with in the rule, and the time that schools were beginning in the districts, then that's how they, that's the reason why they worded it that way. But we are not in a state of emergency. We are also not medical professionals, so we should not be making medical decisions. The Department of Ed, the Department of Ed, the Department of Health, neither of them are telling us to make masks mandatory. Those who don't want a mask are not saying no to masks in general. What they are saying is, no to mandating masks. They are saying, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. But don't force it on me. So earlier today, there was a discussion about masks versus no masks, and I want to caution us not to use that phrase, because it's not masks or no masks, it's masks and no mandating masks. So there is a big difference there. How we are go, how are we going to monitor the mandating of these masks is a very serious concern of mine. We already have, we already have many students who don't wear them correctly. We have students who wear them below the nose, we have students who take it off to talk, to eat. Who's going to be the mask police in the school district, if we mandate it? Dr. Moore, earlier, you even used the words, and said that it's just a play on words, to use mandating versus highly recommended. So I'm concerned about that with our students. I'm also very, very concerned about the opting out, and asking parents for a medical exemption or a religious exemption. The executive order 21175 is very clear. That is the executive order from the governor, and it reads, in section one, in part, "Working together," this is the Florida Department of Health and the DOE, "working together to immediately execute rules pursuant to section 120.54 Florida statutes, and take any additional agency action necessary, using all legal means available to ensure safety protocols for controlling the spread of COVID-19 in schools that, A, do not violate Floridian's constitutional freedoms, B, do not violate parents' rights under Florida law to make health decisions for their minor child, and C, protect children with disabilities or health conditions who would be harmed by certain protocols such as face masking requirements." It's very clear. Section two of the executive order, "Any action taken pursuant to section one above shall at minimum be in accordance with Florida's, shall be in accordance with Florida's Parents' Bill of Rights, and protect parents' rights to make decisions regarding, quote, 'masking of their children in relation to COVID-19.'" Clear as day, executive order. The Department of Health order, because the executive order tells us that we're supposed to work with the Department of Health on receiving guidance, which is another issue that I have. The Department of Health rule states in, and I will pull it up here, all the way on the bottom, I believe it's 1B. It states that, of course, you know, students should be encouraged to practice hand washing, we know that, students should stay home if they're sick, of course. But D, is interesting. D, students may wear masks. May, not should, not must, but students may, and this is the Department of Health rule, the Department of Health, I'm sorry, not, yes, rule. Students may wear masks or facial coverings at a mitigation, as a mitigation measure. However, the school must allow for a parent or legal guardian of the student to opt out of the student, for the student from wearing a face mask. It doesn't say to opt out with a medical exemption, it doesn't say to opt out with a religious exemption, it doesn't say to opt out with a little note, it says just to opt out, plain and simple. I think it is a blatant violation. In this particular case, with the wording that we have, to ask parents to opt out of something that clearly does not mandate, or require, or recommend that they do. I think that we are opening up a can of worms that we really should not do. I will continue here on the DOH rule number six. Non-discrimination. Students whose parents and legal guardians have opted them out of the face mask, of a mask or face covering requirement, shall not be subject to any harassment or discriminatory treatments, including, but not limited to, A, relegation to certain physical locations. That right there eliminates that safe space in the classroom, where if you don't want to wear the mask for five, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, you can go in that little corner right there, and you can have a little face break. This, that right there, that violates what is here. B, isolation during school activities, or C, exclusion from any school-sponsored events or activities, which anyone could argue quarantining healthy students does. So all of the above, all of that violates both the executive order and the DOH recommendations. If students are being questioned, a parent mentioned, and I think, Mrs. Berenborg, thank you, Mrs. Berenborg mentioned it, if students are being questioned, or bullied for masks, or with regard to vaccines, they are eligible for the HOPE scholarship. And if parents are listening, if that is happening, apply for the HOPE scholarship, and you can take your child to a private school. That should not be happening, period, end of story. I want to pull up, and I'll end here, I want to pull up the letter, the cover letter that came to Dr. Moore, and eventually down to us, that is from the Department of Education. And of course, Mrs. DiAgresta referenced some of this with regard to the other counties that are facing disciplinary action of some sort, or consequences, or whatever you want to mention. But I'm just going to read a couple of parts of it, because that's important, too. It gives a little bit of context with regard to the reason why those counties, I mean, those districts are under radar. It reads, "Today, the State Board of Education issued the Alachua and Broward County school districts with an order demanding that they comply with state statute and rule. School board members of the districts have willingly and knowingly violated the rights of parents by denying them the option to make healthcare decisions for their children, a blatant violation of the Parents' Bill of Rights, which Governor DeSantis signed into law on June 29, 2021." I'm going to come down a little bit. Quote, "It is important to remember that this issue is about ensuring local school board members, elected politicians, follow the law. These public officials have sworn an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Florida. We cannot have government officials pick and choose what laws they want to follow," said Commissioner of Education Conquerin. Quote, "These are the initial consequences to the intentional refusal to follow state law and state rule to purposefully and willingly violate the rights of parents. This is simply unacceptable behavior." And lastly, as an initial step, the Florida Department of Education will then begin to withhold state funds on a monthly basis, an amount equal to one-twelfth of the total annual compensation of the school board members who voted to impose the unlawful mask mandates, until each district demonstrates compliance. Mrs. DiAgresta, that's what I was referring to earlier, where I couldn't find it, that's where it is. If this entire situation occurred with a teacher or a staff member in our school, who blatantly wanted to violate school board policy, that person would be disciplined, a letter in their file, or they would be fired. When you directly violate board rules, Department of Health rules, executive orders, or state statutes, you act illegally. And we all know, police officers here, what happens when you act illegally. I will not violate the DOH, DOE board rules, DOH rules, executive orders, or state statutes. I cannot, and I will not, support this mask mandate for any student. I will absolutely support any option to highly recommend and let the parents, until another emergent, God forbid, state of emergency comes down, but I will not violate any one of those, that these are clearly written, clearly written, with regard to face mask requirements, regarding masking of their children related to COVID-19. Those are the rights of the parents to make, not this school board. This school board is not above the law."
Dr. Jones.
Question for either Ms. DiAgresta or Dr. Moore. It was stated earlier that the NAACP has filed a suit against this ruling, or Governor DeSantis. Do you know anything more specific about that?
Dr. Jones, the NAACP filed a direct appeal to the Fourth District Court of Appeal, and it's under the Chapter 120 rulemaking statutory requirements for an emergency rule. It's very technical, they claim that the Department of Health did not follow the appropriate processes to adopt the emergency rule, and it's a very narrow appeal provision, the Fourth rule. So it's probably 10 days, two weeks out before we'll hear anything from that legal challenge.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any further comments, Dr. Schiff?
Yeah. I know at least five parents who couldn't be here tonight, because their children, they're home taking care of their kids with COVID, which they caught in school. I listened to our union president hold back tears over losing a colleague from COVID, which, while it didn't happen in our school, affects our school. And I've heard Dr. Moore say that what has happened in the first two weeks is equivalent to what happened in, I think you said, a month last year, or what happened in a week? I don't remember exactly how you said it, but a week was equivalent to a month of what we saw last year, or two weeks, I can't remember exactly how you said it. The opt-out provision, you're right, Mrs. Rosario, it doesn't say with a medical exemption, but it also doesn't say not with a medical exemption. And according to what Ms. DiAgresta said, there's contradictory ruling on that. You can boo me all you want, go for it. Because we're going to disagree on this. Go for it.
That's enough.
I have been misquoted, I have been talked to, and I will sit here and take all of it, because that's my job. But in terms of what I see happening in our schools, and in terms of what I see happening among people who are close to me, what I hear from people in schools, I think I answered 70 emails this week, about concerns, about masking. And what I hear is that we can't keep schools open, unless we take, unless we have some mitigation factor. So if you want to use the HOPE scholarship and take your kid out, absolutely. As Mrs. Rosario said, I encourage you to do that. If you want to keep your kid home, I encourage you to do that, because that's what parents are also doing now, because they don't feel that their kids are safe in our schools. And that is as hurtful to me as I think it is to Dr. Moore. I hear that there is disagreement on the medical issue. What I also hear is that when there is a medical opt-out, it's not about whether the mask constitutes a medical device, it's whether it interferes with the medical well-being of a child who has a condition that would be harmed by wearing a mask. And I think we clarified that this afternoon. So in an effort to keep schools open, in an effort to keep classes open, grades open, our rates are increasing so rapidly, that I'm concerned about that. And it is also my job on this board to listen to the advice of the superintendent. It's, that's his job. He is our, he is our CEO, not our CFO. And it's his job to give us advice, and to make recommendations to this board, about what he thinks is in the best interests of our children and our community, and our well-being, and our ability to provide the education we're charged with providing. So for that reason, I actually, you know, Dr. Jones brought up why this didn't go through 12th grade, and I think we share some concern about that. But I know that there's controversy about this, I know there's difference of opinion, I know that kids in high school can get vaccinated if their parents choose for that, they do not have the ability to do it on their own, they can only do it with parental support. We are not, I heard some comments about where we're collapsing masks and vaccines. We're not mandating vaccines, we're not telling anybody to get a vaccine. That's completely, we have not told a soul to get a vaccine. We have not told children to get a vaccine. So, in the interests of what is best for our schools, and moving forward to keep schools open and create as normal a school year as I can, I support doing this for the next two to three weeks, and then we will come back, we will revisit, and we will decide. What I am interested in knowing is what are, and I know it's a little hard to tell at this point, is what are the criteria by which we would determine? Because if rates are going down, if we see less incidents in schools, and it suggests that our strategies are working, does that mean we pull back on the strategies? Or does that mean we keep going with the strategies? And I don't know that we know that yet. So I'm just saying, these are concerns in my head, which I know you will bring forward in, when you make recommendations on the 14th. But I am concerned about how we will read that data. In any case, you know, we've been going on about this since 10 o'clock in the morning. I don't know that there's a whole lot more to say, Mr. Barefoot hasn't had a chance to speak, and I suggest that Mr. Barefoot speaks, and we move to a vote.
May I respond?
Yes.
We do have mitigation factors in place.
And they're not working, but that's the point, they're not working.
No, 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 let me finish, without interrupting, please. Dr. Moore, Mr. Bass sent out an email on Monday. Dr. Moore, Mr. Bass sent out an email on Monday mandating every staff to wear a mask. That is a difference of protocol that was not in place on the day one of, on day one of schools. That has been a change. It was mentioned earlier, why not give that a try and see how it goes? It appears that our adults are getting sick. So if that is a, if that will help, we don't know if that will help, but that's one of the things that we can use moving forward as a change in mitigation. We cannot make decisions emotionally. When you make emotional decisions, you make mistakes. We have to work on the data. What we were told tonight is that 20 more staff members, was it 20 more, Dr. Moore, that you said just now? 20 more staff members. But how many of those are teachers? We don't have that data. I'm not given that data. We're not given how many elementary versus high school. So how are we going to effectively make the difference between mandating it in elementary schools versus our high schools? It's not okay for us to make decisions that are not data-driven. We need data-driven information to make data-driven decisions and not emotional decisions.
All right. So obviously, it's a very difficult decision. Obviously, there's strong feelings on both sides. Two weeks.
Right. Three weeks.
No, two weeks. This goes into effect August 30th, and it goes through our next school board meeting, which is the 14th of September. Between now and then, it gives people, if this passes, an opportunity to pursue the opt-outs, the motion identified. It just seems to me, I'd rather, in my view, be safe than sorry. And over the next two weeks, we're going to learn a lot more. Some of the data, the differential between staff and teachers or instructional personnel can be vetted. The situation at Beachland will be clearer. The other school where the numbers, I think, Mr. Bass, you quoted, I forget which school it was, but we had, what, 129 kids out? Up from, what, 50-some late last week, today? Was that number today or yesterday?
Through the chair, yes, there's Citrus Elementary. They have 129 out today. On average, around 50 in a non-COVID year.
Now, obviously, we don't know whether those are parents withholding those kids because they don't consider the environment safe or because the kids got sniffles or what have you.
It could be quarantined.
So I'm in favor of this motion as presented, K through eight. We will, it will be monitored carefully, and I would ask the superintendent to update us on a daily basis, please. I mean, I know that the website gets updated sometime, what, midnight or 5:00 in the morning or what have you?
5:31 AM.
5:31 AM. We will also have the benefit, I believe you said, Ms. DiAgresta, there is a court ruling supposedly coming sometime this, next week, is it, or this week?
Potentially, we have a ruling out of the circuit court in Leon County. There is a hearing going on. It started, the evidentiary hearing started Monday, it lasted Monday and all of today. It continues tomorrow, so they're not done yet. So hopefully, they'll finish this week and we'll get a ruling from Judge Cooper.
Well, clearly, on the legal front and on the practice standpoint, what's going on in our schools, we're going to know more two weeks or come September 13, 14 than we know today. So having said that, I'd like to call the question. All in favor, or first of all, I will make the motion as stated to, I will read it again. Approve face pack coverings be mandatory for all students in pre-K through eighth grade while indoors when social distancing is not possible and while utilizing school transportation. Parents have the opportunity to opt out their child or children from wearing a face covering by providing documentation from a medical provider. For example, Florida licensed, let me finish, please. For example, Florida licensed physician, physician's assistant, psychiatrist or psychologist, or due to needs outlined in their IEP or Section 504 plan indicating that they need this accommodation. Students who received an exemption from wearing a face mask covering during the 2021 school year will automatically be granted an exemption for the current academic year. These requirements will be fully implemented on Monday, August 30, 2021. The outlined requirements will expire September 15, 2021, unless extended prior to that date. September 15 is the day after our next scheduled school board meeting, which is September 14. So I will move that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Jones is seconding it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
The motion carries three to two.
Breaking the law.[971.13][971.16](APPLAUSE).
He's saying, "Thank you for breaking the law."
Mrs. Rosario, Mrs. Barbour, thank you for not breaking the law.
Shame on you for breaking the law.
Mr. Barefoot, you're a liar. You're a liar. You said you wouldn't mandate it for the children because it was wrong. Two weeks later, you're a liar.
That's enough.
You didn't have your mask on at the rec. meeting yesterday.
Breaking the law.
All right. The other action item, which I've labeled 13C, is the legislative agenda that Dr. Jones and Mrs. Barrenburg raised. Ms. Barrenburg, you want to discuss this, and this will be voted on based on this discussion.
Yeah, there were two items that I wanted to add to this. I did speak to the superintendent this afternoon after our workshop about it, and he put in the items, wrote them up for me the way that I believe we need to present them, which I appreciate. You all have a copy of it. Do you want to read it, Dr. Moore?
I just want to make sure you had it.
Everybody's got a copy now.
So there are two items up for discussion. One is, revolves around establishing Florida Innovative Learning Pilot Program in which school districts may propose to educate students in a manner modeled after the successful 2020, 2020, 21 innovative learning platforms used across the state. The State Board of Education shall establish criteria for students participating and determination of required district assurances. To assure student success, FDLE will be responsible for the review of approval of each district plan to ensure districts receive full FEFP funding for students fully participating within the parameters established by rule. So what we're seeking here is flexibility to create very similar models to implement.
In other words, we had virtual learning this past year that was supported with funding from the state that has been taken away. So this item right here is referring to that.
Correct, and this would allow us to continue to do it even outside of COVID. And the second item revolves, is a Mr. Fagan special that increase the distribution of FEFP funding to districts, and districts' total state funding is less than 50% of the gross state and local funding, including the state categorical funds of discretionary lottery school recognition and class size, i.e. forward funding. Upon receipt of any district's authorization, the Department of Education to distribute upon a maximum of 25% of state funds on or before August 31 of each year. This is the item, and to give us a level of flexibility from the state to avoid having to issue a tan.
Right, and this is an item I keep bringing up, keep bringing up. The reason why I brought this up tonight, board members, for us to vote on, is because we do have a delegation meeting on September 8 or 9, and that is before our next board meeting. So I felt like board members, to have the opportunity for all of us to agree, we should actually vote on it so that these items can be put on our platform so that we can present them to Senator Mayfield and Representative Groll.
Yes.
What are we doing? I don't understand, I don't recall talking about this, or I do recall talking about the item with the FEFP funding. I don't recall talking about the Learning Pilot Program. I don't know why this wasn't on the agenda before so that I could do research to prepare for this discussion, to vote on. I don't know, what are we voting on?
Okay, I will remind you of what I said this afternoon. If you want, you can go back and watch it. The point I brought up that is just coming to light, it was not to light before the--
What is just coming to light?
Can I finish?
Yes.
You asked another board member not to interrupt you.
Yes, but we're having a discussion.
No, I am talking. Could you please listen?
Are you pointing your pencil at me?
Oh, my God. Mrs. Rosario, please, can I please state the matter, the problem?
You absolutely could, but please don't point your pencil at me.
Please don't point your finger at me. There we go. Okay, so, this afternoon, there was an item that I talked about, and that is because recently, we have learned that the virtual option, which more students have now signed up for, which you understand we have a virtual school, right?
Yes.
Okay. The funding last year for that virtual school was provided with S.R. Money. That has been taken away.
For the transitional model.
Right. And I'll let Dr. Moore answer that. But my concern was, we should at least bring that to the attention of our legislators so they can help us with that. That is not an extra item that I'm trying to do. It's an item for us to say to our two representatives, hey, could you help us with this because we're losing funding for students that we are teaching? Dr. Moore, is that only for transitional or is it also for virtual?
Through the chair, that would be flexible, but initially, as we've done it here in this particular county, that would be the transitional model.
So the reason why I bring this up, Mrs. Rosario, is because parents have complained when their kids are quarantined that there's nothing for them. Last year, we were able to do a little bit more, not a lot, but at least have this virtual option. And that funding has been taken away. That is why I brought this item to the board tonight, so that we can ask for that funding to continue.
And you're asking for it to be called, titled, "Florida Innovative Learning Pilot Program"?
No.
That's what it says. Establish the Florida Innovative Learning Pilot Program.
Again, I asked for, I explained to the superintendent, what's the best way to word this so that it directly talks about the program that you need the funds for, that you lost the funds for? That's what I asked the superintendent to write. I did not write that.
So, Dr. Moore, are we, I need clarity on what we're calling this. Are we calling it the Pilot Program? Are we calling it, is that what the language here is, that to establish the Florida Innovative Learning Pilot Program for transitional?
So through the chair, what we were charged to do was create a legislative priority. So using the appropriate language as we would move through the legislative process and seek for partnership or to push with certain legislators the opportunity to support this particular initiative. So this is nothing more very similar to what our legislative priorities would be. I think what Board Member Barrenburg is referring to is that as a board, you now have a representative on the state FSBA representation, and there is a convening of those individuals who represent 67 different districts. And this would be the opportunity for Dr. Jones to have consensus from the board regarding at least two initiatives that came up. So just a little bit of a backstory, this came to us at our previous board meeting, so it is kind of fast-moving. This is the first convening. I think Ms. Barrenburg doesn't want this board's representative not to go there informed with the consensus of the board. So this is an initial reaction to Doc Jones going to this particular meeting and having some information to share on behalf of the school board.
Well, I get all of that. My concern is that we weren't prepared to have this conversation, and I have other questions with regard to innovative learning platforms, because one says it's a pilot program, and then the next line, it says innovative learning platform. So if we could include in here somewhere that it's specifically for transitional or something to that effect, because otherwise, innovative learning platforms could be anything. So are we going to use this?
Through the chair, Mr. Meyer might want to expand, but we use the language that was used at the state level when we created this particular item. So if I was to say transitional, I think we're the only district that used the term transitional because we named it transitional because we wanted to transition kids back to COVID as quickly as possible. So we use the appropriate language that was used across the state in their documentation that we submitted to them. Mr. Meyer, do you want to?
You nailed it. That was the language the district heard.
Through the chair, Dr. Moore, yes, you hit the nail on the head. That is the language that the Department of Education issued to us. Districts were offered the opportunity to create an innovative learning plan during the fall, and we were given the opportunity to extend it in the spring. And once the emergency orders went away, we're now not able to do that. So yes, that's the language that they used. So proposing it to be similar, but it could clearly be called anything if it has the same effect of allowing us to submit a plan to offer an opportunity to not just do brick and mortar.
But a pilot program is a temporary program.
Again, that was a proposal. It could be permanent. My experience is that they're more apt to do pilot programs, to give them a shot and see what happens. We're participating in one now, right? There's a number of those that they've established through the cares, and so it may be more amicable to the state to do that. Of course, the board, you guys could choose to say, make it permanent. Just trying to draft some language for consideration.
I think where a little bit of confusion happened is that I presented the FSBA platform, and then we have the legislative meeting coming up on September 8. And I think whatever we do on this is that we align them so that our legislative meeting and our FSBA platform, kind of the same thing, which we have done before because you look at the past priorities, a lot of times the FADS will be aligning with them, a lot of different organizations. And again, when I take this to FSBA, they take a look at all of them. I have to put it in by September 1, and then they decide their priorities. But I could tell you, number two is something we've been fighting for, for I don't know how many years. So I really like that one. Do you, Mr. Fagan, that second one? Oh, yeah. Land rich, people poor, sometimes our money's going up there. But anyway, I think that's where a little bit of confusion happened on that one. But I think it is really good if we approve these, if we align them with what we're going to present to FSBA, because that's legislative priorities there. And the more the counties want of the same, that's going to be what they choose. I have a feeling number two is a priority for a lot, so, thank you.
Any more discussion?
Yes, me.
Yes.
Again, I didn't come up with this wording. This is what the state came up with. I saw, and sometimes, Mrs. Rosario, other board members, yourself included, have brought up emergency items. You can either vote it down or vote it up. But I don't think everything needs to be vetted way ahead of time when it comes to an emergency and timing. And that's why I did it. I did not mean to point my finger at you or point my pencil at you. I had my pencil in my hand. So I apologize for that part if that's the way you were offended and took it. But I wasn't done speaking, and so that's why I was upset. Because you admonished another board member tonight for stepping on your sentence, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, our feelings tonight are, our nerves are frayed. I get that. Everybody's on edge, I get that. But at least we can be respectful. So I brought this item up because I realized, wait a minute, we don't have another board meeting until after that meeting.
Say, both meetings, yep.
Yeah. And so this afternoon, I mentioned that, and that's why I'm bringing it up tonight for a vote. You can either vote it down or vote it up. I call for the vote.
So the motion is made by Mrs. Barrenburg. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second.
Either one of us.
Okay.
Pick one.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Barrenburg, Mr. Barefoot, is there a second?
Dr. Jones? No, actually, I put down Dr. Schiff.
Okay, Dr. Schiff.
All right, where are we?
That was action. I think we're done with action.
So we now move to discussion items. Are there any discussion? Otherwise, school board matters. We've had a lot of discussion.
I think we have superintendent's.
Superintendent is-- Superintendent is, Superintendent, you have a report?
Through the chair, I do not have a report for this evening. Thank you.
Okay. There's no discussion items. School board matters. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Had the privilege of visiting every school the first two weeks. Very enjoyable visits. I was with Dr. Moore and Ms. Barrenburg at Transportation the first day, about quarter to six. Really excited to watch the bus drivers get on their routes, and they are there for students. Because I like to go out and see kids quite a bit, I went to some football practices and went up to the sneak peek for the band at Sebastian River High School. They had to cancel it that night with rain, but I got to talk to band personnel and students, and that was wonderful. One of the neatest things I participated in since our last board meeting is the Inclusion Playground with our county commissioner, Laura Moss, Stacy Clem, one of our ESE advocates, and Cindy Emerson. And again, thank you to our district for our Inclusion Playground, and they are looking to do that in our community, hopefully at the spot right across from Vero Beach High School. It's just in the beginning stages, but we're going to bring the community around for that, because they are absolutely wonderful. Several MCAN and Learning Alliance meetings, and, Dr. Moore, as I told with you one time, this is their 10-year on the Moonshot moment, and they're looking at leaders across our community to really grab in and bring it together again. Very complimentary of you on what you're doing as far as Best By Kids, and working with them to make sure that our students are reading by third grade, as that is a graduation. It looks good in third grade, you're pretty good to graduate. And again, with the advocacy, I'll be going to that meeting on September 13th, and bringing back all the information on what the other districts are going to share, and what their issues are. And Mr. Hart invited us to a Felsmer meeting, FACS meeting on Friday, and that was absolutely wonderful. I think it's very, very important that we get out to all parts of our community, and to see what their needs are, especially hearing from Mr. E. at Felsmer Elementary, and what they need, especially in this COVID era, struggling with some things, and making us aware was very, very helpful, so thank you on that. And I think we're going back to the virtual school opening, which was good with Krista Maddox and her team. I know a lot of work went into that, but it's really great to get out there and see our students and teachers. Thank you.
Mrs. Barrenburg?
Sure. Yeah, first day of school was exciting. I got to go to several schools. It was, almost felt normal, so it was kind of nice. Executive Roundtable has a golf tournament on October 30th, and that is going to directly benefit our schools and our kids. It is for Kids of Hope for funding for that, possibly sending some of our administrators or teachers to different trainings. So I wanted people to please support that endeavor. We still need sponsors and prizes, so. Extended Day is looking for volunteers. And I told them I would shout out to wherever I could tomorrow morning on the radio. I will do that as well. I know Extended Day, just like when we're hiring teachers, you can't invent people, but you can at least ask for somebody to consider volunteering. If you like working with children, Extended Day could use you before and after school. And then I went to Planning and Zoning again last week. We have, you know, for a while there, my Planning and Zoning meetings were once every other month, once every three months, and now they're almost every other week, or weekly. So it's been very active with our community, as you can tell from all the building, is going to continue for the next few years. I'm just telling you, that's out there. The growth is happening to the south, a little bit to the west, and up towards Sebastian, and this area especially. This is, you're not going to see any trees left over here. So that's something to keep in mind. On Saturday, I went to the, what I thought was going to be a memorial service for one of our Wabaso children that died over the summer. I walked up, and everything was locked up, so I was a little confused. I guess it got canceled. The father was disheartened, I don't think he could go through with it. So I happened to be there, and the CEO came up to the door and opened the door, and said, oh my goodness, and it's a former teacher of ours, Kelly Rowe, who was at Wabaso before. She has now, and I have this for every board member, there's a card of hers and one of the flyers. And even though it's a for-profit, and the reason why it is a for-profit is because during COVID, the other two centers, which was Goodwill and ARC, closed down. And so a lot of our challenged adults, those who are 18 years old and older, had nowhere to go during that time. So she wanted to act quickly, instead of waiting around for the nonprofit way to go, she did this. And it's impressive. Please go at least look at it. Now, the reason why I wouldn't normally, you know, really project something that's for-profit, but I will tell you this, we're always talking about sending our kids on to careers and to college. How about these kids? So we need to make that effort to look at, where are our kids when they leave our high schools? Where are they going? And this is a great alternative. What she's doing there is remarkable. I did go to, virtually, Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments, and the ORCA group presented, and it was very informative. You heard a parent or grandparents tonight talking about masks winding up in our rivers and out to our oceans. That is part of what they're seeing. They're seeing these masks going out into our oceans. Manatees are dying. I don't know whether or not it's because of the masks, but I'm going to tell you, these masks are causing a problem. Their presentation was on stormwater runoff, and how important it is to educate people about what it is that's on your lawn, that's going into your canal, which eventually is going into the river, which is eventually going into the ocean. And so we are in the job of educating. We need to make sure that our teachers are looking at stuff that's available to them, which is the Kilroy data. If you don't know what that is, go please to kilroyacademy.org. It's very informative. You can go there and you can see what's happening. There are different, I think they put them on the buoys, and they're taking in information about what's happening with the health of our river, and I believe some of the ocean, too. And then, or you can go to teamwork.org and see all the things that are available for teachers to use, or kids working on science fair projects to use. I also, at that same presentation, careersourceirc.com, they also did a presentation, and they talked about a new tech program that they have out, with looking for partnerships, with one of them being us. So that's something to look into, too, is Career Source. And just so people don't know, we use acronyms all the time. So ORCA is Ocean Research Conservation Association, so I just wanted to put that out. Very informative. I'm going to tell you, that was one of the best presentations I've ever seen. Now, of course, I'm a science geek, so I like that stuff. That was at the Treasure Coast Council of Local Governments. And that's all I have.
Dr. Schiff?
Sure, just a couple of things. I think some of you saw, because you commented, I had the great fun of doing an MCAN video in the last couple of weeks, which was a little odd to talk to an animate, but inanimate, fuzzy, blue thing.
You did great.
Well, I thought it was going to be really awful, and then I, well, really uncomfortable, and then I just got into it. And Bridget, who operates Moonshot, was so surprised. She was like, she got flustered and absolutely speechless on some take, because I just totally interacted with this thing, which I didn't expect I would do. But that was fun, and I don't hate how it came out. Usually I hate myself on videos, but it was great fun, and it was fun to support the organization and what they did. And I know others of you, I think, have been asked, or will be asked, to do that. Another thing, which is a district thing, I got a tutorial from Ms. Heston Schmidt, I know I'm going to say that name badly, and her colleague, who's, it's late and I'm tired, and her name is escaping me, Pam, you might remember. Sorry, Ms. Dampier.
Mrs. Ainge, she's our district lead secondary counselor.
And her. Mrs. Ainge. And they gave me a really fabulous tutorial on our new score system, which is all about helping, helping our students, and in particular seniors, but also juniors, start, well, and really, working back through ninth and 10th grade when we get there, identifying their interests for college, their abilities, their capacities, getting all of their information together, so that when they're ready to apply, they have it in one place. And they have some, and the schools have these amazing videos. I'm like, I'm ready to go to Gulf Coast University. Because she made sure to show me that one. There's swimming pools, there's beaches. But as the parent of a senior, looking at that was really helpful and informative, and a really great system, so thank you, Ms. Dampier, and others who brought that to the district, because it's a great system. I have yet to convince my child to get on it with me.
I would like one.
But it was, it was great. Got to go to a few schools in the second week of school, because the first week I was busy and missed. Really interesting and fun to just be at some of the schools, see what's going on. Look forward to doing more of that. And as I think Dr. Jones mentioned, also at Mr. Hart's invitation and coordination, went to the FACS meeting in Felsmer. And if you haven't been to Felsmer or any of the meetings out there, it is, it is one of just the best little cities we've got going on here. So I love invitations to go out there, so thank you for that. And that's it.
Mrs. Rosario?
Yeah, same thing. School visits were great on the first day of school. It's exciting, it was exciting to walk the campus and see all of the kids kind of organizing their book bags and their, you know, little trinkets, and it was just sweet, really, really sweet. The transportation cards, Mr. Bass, is there an update on the transportation cards? We haven't talked about that. I know that schools have already begun that process. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Through the chair, we are hoping to have it all implemented and in place and 100% working by September 1st. We, secondary schools are really using them well already. Elementary schools are phasing them in. We have new students to the district that we've got to print their cards for them. With everything that's been going on, it has not been our primary focus as of right now, but it seems to be going very well.
Great. The College and Career Fair, I just wanted to, a couple of announcements of some of the things when you go on our website, they kind of get lost within the scrolling of the flyers that are up there. The College and Career Fair is coming up pretty quickly, September 8th. It's going to be at Indian River Mall. I highly suggest anyone who is interested to go, be there, show up. And of course, what I realize is that the Magnet and School Choice applications are open now, much earlier than they were ever open previously, to my recollection. I may be wrong, but I think that is something to, to share. And the marquees look super great. The new marquees on Vero Beach Elementary, Wabaso, Felsmer, Treasure Coast Elementary, they look wonderful, they really do. What a difference, what a difference a sign, a marquee makes in terms of, you know, when you're driving onto campus, that welcoming feeling looks really, really nice. And I want to thank all of the teachers, I want to thank all the administrators and all of the staff, all of the school, all of the district staff as well, for all of the work that you all put in over the summer. We got, we were able to stay home somewhat, come in one day in July, but everybody else worked right through the summer. And I don't want to take that lightly. I appreciate everyone's work in, obviously, trying to get the schools up and running, you know, at the very beginning. So it's a lot of work. And Dr. Moore, thank you so much for the work that you do. I know that you are a workhorse, a workaholic, but your passion is for this district, and I'm happy to see that you've transitioned well from where you were to where you are right now. So thank you to everybody, and I really do hope and pray that everyone has a safe and happy and really successful school year, this school year.
I would add to all of that, the only, my committees did not meet in August. The, I did do a video, as did Doc., or participated in a video with Dr. Moore for the Learning Alliance the other day. What they asked me to talk about is the benefit of public-private partnerships. And obviously, we all know the Learning Alliance has made a huge difference in the lives of a lot of young people and our teachers that were coached over the last several years, and they're thriving, and that's great. So that's really all I have to report. Dr. Moore, anything, any closing comments?
No, sir.
All right, hearing none. Meetings adjourned at 9:21.